...to order for August 26, 2014. Would the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Fong?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here.
Okay, at this time we have oral communications related to the Garden Grove Housing Authority only. Seeing none, item number two is the consent items. We have the status report and the minutes. Questions, comments, entertaining motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We have no public hearings. Any matters from the Chair Commissioners or Director? Seeing none, move to adjournment to September 23 of 2014.
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Fong?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Broadwater?
Here. Okay, at this time we'll have the invocation by Susan Emery and then we will have the flag salute by Chris Fong.
Dear God, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, put your hand over your heart, reset the pledge with me. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we had before the meeting, we had two close session items. We have absolutely nothing to report on either one. We will go to presentations, as understanding we have a spotlight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to give the spotlight this evening.
Please Chief Kevin Rainey, please.
If I could have Veronica Gomez, please come up to the podium. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight the Garden Grove City Council is honored to shine the community spotlight on Veronica Gomez for her volunteerism and commitment to making a difference in her community by supporting the police department's K-9 unit. Recently Veronica saw a TV program about police service dogs, and she learned that just like police officers, they run the risk every day of encountering an armed attacker. The program also featured a girl who had raised money to get her local police dog a vest. Veronica was inspired to do the same. A bulletproof vest costs approximately $900. Veronica managed to raise almost $2,000. She donated the remaining money to the Police Department Service Dog Fund so they could purchase a new bite suit for their K-9 Strauss. Veronica raised the money by creating buttons, and this is an example of the buttons that are before you, and taking those buttons out to the community. She placed fundraising jars at her gymnastics gym, her family's veterinary office, as well as Strauss's veterinary office. Veronica also received donations from local businesses, her coaches, friends, and teachers to further her cause. In May, I recognized Veronica at a brief ceremony held in front of the Police Department where she presented our K-9 Strauss with the new ballistic vest. The City Council wishes to extend their deepest appreciation to Veronica for her efforts, and at this time the Mayor and City Council would like to present Veronica Gomez with a gift of appreciation and recognition of her dedication to public safety in our community.
Veronica, if you'd like to say a few words, please do. Okay, let's go to oral communications. Rod Powell. Rodney, where are you?
Might be in the other room. We have an overflow room.
Sorry to keep you waiting. My name is Rod Powell. I am a citizen of Garden Grove, and it's good to be here. Sorry if it might be a little negative tonight, possibly. I'm not happy that our city has become so much of a lapping stock. I'm watching the Channel 2 news with my wife last night. She says, hey, look, and we're watching, and they're making a big ordeal out of, you know, the matter with the fire department and Jeremy Broadwater. And, you know, I swear I was going to come down here many times and didn't out of our friendship, Mayor Broadwater. And this was had nothing to do with this fire department. This was from Hair Park when he was park patrol. I got bit by a little small dog. Jeremy was there. He was sitting in his patrol truck, you know, maybe 50, 75 yards away. I'd ran past him three times on my run, past this dog three times, and in spite of having the park patrol there, I got bit by a little dog. And I was, you know, not happy, you know, I got a little peck on the back of my leg, so I immaturely gave the owner of the dog my opinion about him letting the dog loose. I will admit, I was a little out of order, and I finally gave up. The guy was pretending not to speak English, and that was making me more upset. And so I walked over to the patrol truck, and Jeremy, you know, says, well, I could hear you yelling. I go, you know, he goes, I can charge you with verbal assault. And I'm thinking, God, I'm here bit by a dog, where's your love, you know, sympathy? I'm the victim here. And we ended up calling the police. This dog could barely be held back by the owner. I mean, he, it came this close, I don't know what would have happened if it actually got loose and attacked the police, but it was real close. Anyways, I was going to come down here and talk about that, but I just said, nah, I'll let it go, you know? But the truth is, I've talked to Jeremy at that park, and we have an ongoing problem with dogs there being let loose by their owners. And Jeremy told me point blank that he doesn't, I don't think anyone, I think, I don't think you'll find a record of anyone ever getting fined for that. They get warned, and they know they only get warned, so they know there is no enforcement. So he told me point blank, that's what he does. He gives them a warning. And he doesn't even do that if he can see that they're way out far away from everybody else. I'm thinking, don't you realize when a runner like me comes through, it doesn't take very long before I'm over there? If you're not doing anything about it, by the time I get over there, I can get bit, you know? So anyways, that's just an idea of my opinion of his work at that park. But the issue here is the fire department. You know, and I was going to keep this a confidence, but it's relevant. You told me at the claim jumper that you only were going to run for mayor because your son would have, I mean, you interpreted your son would have a better chance of getting on the fire department.
You've got to be out of your mind.
I'm not out of my mind, and you can deny it all you want. I'll take a polygraph. I will.
Yes.
I'll pay for it, too. You know, if you, you clearly stated that's the only reason you didn't even want to run. You were, this was when we were talking about fireworks. We went down there and we had a nice talk. We were talking about Andrew Doe not supposed to be on the council, and in the course of our conversation, you weren't even going to run for mayor. And then, then the only reason you were going to, would consider it is so that he, you know, he could, I'm not saying you said it in a way that anything crooked was going on, and I don't think you did anything, I hope you didn't do anything you're not supposed to. I really don't think you would. But the point is, by being mayor, he's got an, it creates a situation, obviously, if it doesn't work out. And I mean, you could say that the fire department is being, what's the word, making all this into drama, and you could say there's political things, and you can say all those things. But we do have a situation, you know, there's something wrong when the fire department to begin with will not come to the council meeting and adamantly oppose fireworks. There's something wrong with that former fire chief. But now we've got a situation where it's saying they're going down, helping, helping, I mean, double, all these things in the paper about the things they do, special things just because of Jeremy. I don't know why they're saying that, if they're making it up, or what's going on, but we got a big situation, and that's why I'm here, because I don't like the fact that we have this situation. It's embarrassing to our city, and I don't, I, I've taken my full time and I won't go over and I'm done.
Thank you.
And I can't stick around, I'm sorry. If you have something to say, say it now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed City Council Members. My name is Jeff Snow, and I'm here tonight as an ambassador of the Special Olympics of Southern California. In the 1960s, the first Special Olympics was held for the intellectually disabled in the backyard of the Shriver Home. Since the 60s, in the past 50 years, tremendous evolution has come to the Special Olympics, and in 2007, for the first time ever, Special Olympics evolved into a worldwide global event. The World Games of 2007 were held in Shanghai, China, and in 2011, four years later, they were held in Athens, Greece. Thanks to the work of some very dedicated executives at Deloitte and Touche, the 2015 Special Olympics World Games were proposed and won by the United States of America in the city of Los Angeles. Los Angeles is known for having many movie stars, many all-stars, but in the summer of 2015, the Special Olympians from all over the world will be the real stars. Approximately one year from now, for 10 days at the Coliseum in 27 different venues, ESPN and Disney will be providing full opening ceremony to closing ceremony coverage. This event will be larger than the 1984 Summer Olympics. Why are we here in Garden Grove? There's a unique opportunity for towns and communities throughout Southern California to participate in the World Games and help welcome the 177 different nations that will be participating. From Algeria to Zimbabwe, A to Z, there's an opportunity to host a country's delegation, which consists of approximately 100 people, 70 intellectually disabled athletes and 30 coaches. A community can choose to participate in the host town event, usually coordinated through service clubs and other community leaders, with the blessing of City Council, but never any funding from the city itself. I am here tonight to ask the good people of the city of Garden Grove and your vibrant and robust service community to consider contributing towards this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity by contacting Special Olympics Southern California and expressing your interest. Your neighbors in Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, Westminster, Irvine, Orange, Fullerton, and Aliso Viejo have made the commitment to make a difference in the lives of these Special Olympians. It's a two-and-a-half-day commitment to welcome these foreign Special Olympians to the United States of America, share your town's unique culture with them, provide lodging and food, and make it a memory that they'll cherish forever. Happy birthday to you, Mayor Broadwater.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I also wish to wish you a merry or happy birthday, Mayor Broadwater, and many happy Most of the news media lately has been about a violent thug who was shot in Ferguson, Missouri, whose name I will not mention here. During this same time period, our sons and daughters have been trying to restore peace and protect the innocent people in a region of the world that is ruled by tribal regimes. These leaders have all expressed at one time or another the same goal, whether by force or migration, they seek to dominate the world under their primitive, brutal, and chauvinistic ideology. Our young people have been paying the price for their help. Twelve of them, all under the age of 30, wearing the uniform of the United States Marine Corps, died in Afghanistan. Where was the media coverage of this tragedy? Some of them may have been of African, or Asian, or Hispanic descent. Some of them may even have had tattoos. All that I know of these men are their names and ages, which I will name here. Justin Allen, 23. Brett Lindley, 29. Matthew Weichert, 29. Justice Bartlett, 27. Dave Santos, 21. Chase Stanley, 21. Jesse Reed, 26. Matthew Johnson, 21. Zachary Fisher, 24. Brandon King, 23. Christopher Gerke, 23. Sheldon Tate, 27. Wherever you are, I salute you. Mr. Mayor, without needing to repeat these names, will you close this meeting in their honor?
I'm a mayor and council. Name's Craig Durfee. I have different things I want to go through in my three minutes. First of all, I ask on the consent item 9D, that would be the surfacing or repaving of Chapman to Cotella. I hear paint is cheap. It's a very conservative expense. I try to ask staff to find out if that's on the plan for painting a bike lane. It's a good spot, it's a wide street. We're going to get our master plan, talk to Michelle Martinez, this guy's going to have a meeting for the funding of $13 million next month. Hopefully October, City Garden Grove will have the funds to start your master plan. The next item I'd like to ask is, I was at a meeting last night with the Honorable Councilman Chris Beard. A councilman of Santa Ana has been very adamant and successful to have a youth commission. It's not everything that you've done in Garden Grove is nowhere close. It's very broad, and it has a great impact on the youth. Congressman Albert Laurenthal has a group of disadvantaged youth that go through the military camp there at the National Guard, and I've seen them, very alert at Las Amas Council meeting. And also the school district has a program where the youth go and learn about civics. We don't have that in Garden Grove. There's no way for me to sit there and analyze City Garden Grove staff, what they're doing. It's up to the council and staff to be competitive for our youth to have a place to stay and reinvest Garden Grove. Reimagination is a kickstart, a pilot light. We have to think outside the box. I encourage this council, just like your commission, your traffic, your planning, are always looking and checking things themselves. This is what we're up for election this year, is to revest in our elected leaders a new vision. I also would like to encourage decisions on the green commission for the bike racks. I'd like to see some out here at the council chambers. I know I may have to write it to prove a point, but we need to start thinking about like Culver City that gives 100 bicycle racks. I haven't done all the details, but I think we need to look at like Santa Ana asked me, and I think a ring type would be the best type for security for law enforcement, because the front and the tire frame can be secured. And I don't know how many the chief has in his storage of bicycles, but I hear from various law enforcement, it's a quite, it's a quite a number of them, I'm assuming here. I don't have the exact number. We need to start looking at ways to invest in securing the alternative transportation. And I really think that the youth want to be part of this, but you have to open the door, and I ask you to work with the school district. Also, lastly, in the voice of O.C. today, I would encourage you to look at it, our cities, or our school districts, there's only three for Safe Road School applying for, there are none of the other, like our Garden Grove School District or others applying for Safe Road School. I would encourage, since we have a limited law enforcement chief, to look at safemoves.org and hands-free from your having to be responsible for manpower, because that has been well-received in law enforcement across the United States, or at least in California, I should say. Because we need to start teaching our kids how to walk across the street and reduce our fatalities by educating them. I ask that support of the council and staff to put these on the agenda and start showing some interest in your reimagination besides creating more business sales tax, you've got to give the health and vibrant of the schools. And I also have started the bicycle program at Boys' Girls' Club, and it'll be part of the parade. They want to fix three bikes, and I got the Health Department to be a part of this in Orange County for Garden Grove. So I've been very busy, now it's up to the staff and council to work together, and reimagination of your ability to stay outside the box so we can have another cycle via next year. Thank you.
One person mentioned that, hold on just a minute, that we were doing three-minute, we are doing five-minute, correct? Yes, okay.
Good evening, council, mayor, staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. I also want to wish you a happy birthday as well. Presumably there'd be cake afterwards, right? I mean, we're all here for the cake.
Let them eat cake.
Okay. I'm here to ask for the public's help to control rats, fire ants, and mosquitoes. Orange County Vector Control is a public health agency formed to protect the county residents from the dangers of disease carrying insects and animals. There's no charge to call to report the rats, fire ants, and mosquitoes. We all contribute a few dollars through our property taxes. I'll give the number a couple of different times while I do my little spiel here. The Vector Control Agency put out a press release that I'll go ahead and just read verbatim. The West Nile virus-related fatality, so it's very sad, we lost, lost someone in Seal Beach. A Seal Beach resident in her 80s with underlying medical conditions died last week from complications from West Nile virus. She had more severe form of West Nile virus called the neuroinvasive disease, where it affects your nervous system. The Orange County currently leads the state in the number of West Nile virus infections this year with 40 to date. There are still two months remaining of the hot season when mosquitoes breed at their highest rates, so we really have to be diligent in looking for any breeding spots and getting rid of them, or calling Vector Control to come out and take care of those issues. This unfortunate death shows how serious West Nile virus can be, said Dr. Eric Handler from the county health officer. West Nile virus activity tends to peak in August and September in Orange County, but we continue to have cases throughout the fall. It is important for people to remember that the end of the summer does not mean the end of the West Nile virus season. Orange County has 36 symptomatic West Nile virus infections, of which 30 were hospitalized. Infections occurred throughout the county. Because about 80% of the people infected with West Nile virus have no symptoms, the majority of the cases of West Nile virus do not seek medical care and are not tested. The reported cases generally underestimate the number of affected people in our county. It is especially important to take precautions against mosquito bites during the peak season, which is now and for the next couple of months. The symptoms of the West Nile virus include fever, headache, body aches, nausea, tiredness, and sometimes swollen lymph nodes. Anyone who develops the more serious symptoms of West Nile virus, the neuroinvasive, can suffer severe headaches, neck stiffness, confusion, and so forth. People over 50 years of age and those with certain medical conditions are increased risk of serious complications from West Nile virus. In order to help protect, put forth some precautions, if you look around your home, dump and drain any standing water, if it's in a birdbath or a small fountain, plates of water underneath your potted plants, uncovered buckets, pet bowls, any water that sits for more than two days becomes a place for mosquitoes to breed. Vector Control provides little fish that eat mosquito larvae for large ponds and pools. Call us for the free fish to combat mosquitoes. Repair your window and door screens to keep mosquitoes out of your home. Stay indoors at sunrise and sunset, early morning and late at night when mosquitoes will bite you. If you are outside, wear long sleeves and long pants and use insect repellent to protect you and your loved ones from mosquito bites. Please help us control the spread of West Nile virus by calling if you see mosquito breeding sites. We will respond and treat the area to control the mosquitoes and protect the public. Just one mosquito bite from a mosquito infected with West Nile virus can seriously affect you. Call us to report rats, fire ants, and mosquitoes at 714-971-2421, or you can look on the website.
Robin, you might want to tell him.
Okay, I'm just going to stay the website and we're done.
Okay.
TheOrangeCountyVectorControlDistrict.com. Thanks very much.
Tony Flores.
Got some handouts there for you folks. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, my name's Tony Flores. I'm here to talk about the issues that are in our newspaper regarding our fire department. I also too think it's a big problem, but there's no one better qualified to speak on it than me, and I think I'm the only person that can probably relate to Jeremy's issue right now. And I'll tell you why, because we do have some similarities and there are some differences. Back in the late 80s, I was fired from the Garden Grove Police Department, when I believe I shouldn't have been, and well documented. He's on the verge of being terminated if we listen to his superiors. They work with him, they know best. Mr. Fratell here, according to the register, Mr. Fratell questioned whether Broadwater's colleagues are prejudiced against him. Well, interesting, I wanted the same thing too when I was working. That's interesting. When Robertson, Acting Chief Robertson and George Harmio committed perjury during one of the hearings, I thought the same thing. There's a big, thick paragraph in the Orange County Register referring to Jeremy Broadwater's arrests. I've never been arrested or convicted of anything before, during, or since I've been a police officer. Unsafe in the field, according to this report. In 1986, I was credited with saving the lives of two police officers, saved their lives. It's again in the Orange County Register story, he has a documented history of giving incorrect vitals and making up numbers. I initiated and created a Garden Grove municipal code back then. As far as Mr. Jeremy Broadwater, excuse me, he was placed in a situation where he would have to act independently, the patients would gravely suffer, a captain wrote. Again, I had put my life on the line when I shot and killed an armed robbery suspect. Now that the managing partners are putting together an investigation, one of the things that I fear and that I have an issue on is that 1997, an audit was done within the Garden Grove Police Department, that's what I passed around to you folks so you can see what I'm talking about. It's well documented that it was done, there's a memo from the then-chief, there's a memo from the then-city manager that talks about it. But when I asked about it recently in 2011, they said it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. In fact, I was so shocked with the first letter, I had it right back again. That's why there's two letters on there, two different dates. It doesn't exist. Interesting. So the question is, what happened to that 1997 audit? Okay? Yeah, it was a few years ago, we need to discuss our history, we need to find out what's going on. You were mayor then, so you should know Mr. Broadwater. The question is, where is it at? I believe in that document, it'll lay out the details of why me and other folks were dismissed from the police department. If I'm wrong, show it to me. If I'm right, show it to me. But now we're wondering what's going to happen with this particular investigation, the one that's happening now in 2014. Is the public going to see it? Is it going to be whitewashed? Is it going to be tossed aside? I think the citizens need to know. If we're concerned, and I'm going to, again, why I'm going back to 1997, because I'm looking at these recent letters that were sent to President Obama and Mr. Royce's HR bill 4254 regarding the Vietnam human rights, you know, we appear to be pandering to a certain segment here in our community. That's what it looks like when we're doing this. So if we're going to worry about what's happening in Vietnam, we need to make sure we take care of business first here in Garden Grove. That's my opinion, and I believe I'm correct on that. But I'm hoping that this most recent study, this most recent audit comes to light. We need to find out what's going on and why it's going on. If in fact, there was some coercion or whatnot, let the facts speak for themselves. There's allegations that you had leaned on, the fire chief as well, of Mr. Fratell, those are allegations. I have no idea if they're true or not, but we should know with this report. This coming November, I believe that the people here in our state and our nation, we deserve better at our local, state, and federal levels. We don't need career politicians, we need leaders. We need leaders. I'm not running for office, I'm not seeking any appointment to any commission. All I'm saying is that I live in this city along with you folks, I pay my taxes, I expect better than what I'm seeing in the paper. And from what I know of the Garden Grove Fire Department, it's a stellar class of folks. High-class, professional, and we need to keep it that way. And with that, I'll say thank you and have a good evening, oh, and keep Main Street, Main Street. Good evening, thank you.
I noticed there's a pink card over there, is it for oral communications or is it for the big issue?
These are for the hearing.
These are blank.
Okay.
No more oral communication.
At this time, we're going to close oral communication. Gentlemen, anybody want to speak on anything? Hearing none, we will...
Oh, mayor, yes, I do, I do. As for the Special Olympics, I wanted to see if we could sponsor that. And do we need to do a vote today, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, if the council wants to consider it, they could agendize it for an upcoming meeting and consider it at that point. It wouldn't be appropriate to act on it today because it is not on our agenda.
I'd like to agendize it for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other council members want to have anything to say? Okay, at this time, we will close oral communications and we will recess the city council and go to the successor agency and the sanitary agency.
Thank you, mayor, we'll call the August 26th meeting of the Garden Grove Successor Agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with city councils, we'll move on to consent items, which is basically just receiving file of minutes from the last two meetings.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, any matters from agency members?
No.
Seeing none, we will adjourn to sanitary district.
Thank you, and we'll open up the sanitary district meeting. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fawn?
Here. We did oral communications, consent items, just to receive and file the minutes for June 24th.
Move approval.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No other issues to consider, any matters from the board or anybody else wants to comment? All right, nothing further, we'll adjourn to the next meeting, will be on September 23rd at 6:30.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the city council. Let's go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended items 6A through 6E be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member. Move approval of the poll list.
Second that.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to public hearings, 7A.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider an amendment to the municipal code to allow paid parking facilities in the MP zone, and Mr. Chris Chung is here to give a staff report on this item.
I'll give it. Mayor and members of the city council, on July 17, 2014, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the requested amendment number 8009-2014, combined with conditional use permit number CUP 339-11 revised 2014. The conditional use permit was a request to approve modifications to the approved plans and the conditions of approval for an existing indoor sports facility referred to as MAP Sports Facility, to update the business operational conditions relating to but not limited to parking space requirements, building code compliance, and maximum building occupancy. The proposed code amendment before you is being processed by the City of Garden Grove. The parking facilities for fee is a use that is expressly listed in the city's land use matrix as a conditionally permitted use in all commercial manufacturing and mixed-use zones in the city, with the exception of the MP Industrial Park Zone. Since the MP zone was established, the range of uses permitted in the MP zone has expanded and may expand further over time to include more commercial and assembly uses for which accessory or adjacent paid parking facilities may be necessary or appropriate. The proposed code amendment would amend the land use matrix in the municipal code to expressly list parking facilities for fee as a conditionally permitted use in the MP zone, making it consistent with the other commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zones. The conditional use permit process will allow individual review of a proposal and tailors the conditions of approval to each unique site. During the Planning Commission's public hearing regarding 8009-2014 and conditional use permit 339-11, two persons came forward and spoke against the proposed entitlements request, concerning that they were raised issues with but not limited to onsite and offsite parking and vehicle circulation issues, issues with pedestrian safety and access to and from the site, and maximum building issues. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the amendment to the city council in conjunction with approval of the conditional use permit contingent upon the future adoption of the ordinance approving the proposed amendment. The ordinance reads as follows. "In ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment number A-009-2014 to amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, Section 9.16.020.030, to permit parking facilities for fee in the MP Industrial Park Zone subject to a conditional use permit." It is therefore recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing, determine that the ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Article 5, Section 15061, review for exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act, and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving amendment number A-009-2014 to amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, Section 9.16.020.030, to permit parking facilities for fee in the MP Industrial Park Zone subject to a conditionally permitted. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
They're making fun of you, Carl.
I know.
Any questions for staff?
Just one quick question, Carl. As far as if we were to approve this, how would that affect offsite parking? Would that be a negative impact?
It would not be related to offsite parking, this is for onsite only.
Okay, but what I'm trying to say is because you're going to be allocating space onsite, correct, do you think that will have an adverse effect on people parking offsite to avoid the onsite parking? It may could be a question asking you to conjecture that something you don't know, but any issues about that if we were to approve it?
It's quite possible that some places, people will just not want to pay for parking and park elsewhere and walk. That occurs most anywhere. So, when the analysis was done for this, the traffic engineer indicated that there's different reasons why people won't park in a parking lot regardless of whether it's paid or not paid.
Thank you.
I have a question. Where are the MP zones?
The primary MP zones are around Knott, Acacia, Monarch, Western, in the industrial area, just north of the 22 freeway Garden Grove Boulevard, going up to Lamson Avenue and that kind of particular area.
Is there a pending CUP that would benefit from this ordinance?
There's a, the MAPS facility would benefit from this, yes. They would be allowed to charge for parking on their site.
What kind of business is that?
It's an indoor sports facility where they have basketball courts.
I see. Okay, that's all I need to know.
I have a question for you. It's my understanding that MAP is in the process of obtaining another parking facility in very close proximity to the building now. Is that going to be for fees or not for fees?
I am not aware of their intentions to acquire any additional parking areas. The applicant should be here, I believe, he may be able to answer that question.
Is somebody here from MAP that could answer that question for us?
Yes.
Come forward, sir.
Marty Walker from the MAP.
Marty, was my understanding when I was out there with you guys the other day that you had another lot that you were going to...
That we're looking into to increase our parking, yes.
Now, would you pay to park in that lot also?
Yes, that would be the intention.
It doesn't seem to me that that's the way this reads.
I think it would apply to any property within the industrial area, so if they secure another property in the industrial area, it could also permit fee parking.
Okay, that would solve the problem.
I have another question. Would your customers be required to pay the fee to park?
Would they be required, yes.
As part of the membership?
As far as entrance into the facility, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for him? Okay, please have a seat. At this time, we're going to open up the public hearing for anybody like to speak on this issue. Anybody like to say anything on it?
Yes, I had an opportunity to travel over in that direction some time ago, a couple months back. It was jammed. Western and Lamson, if you go towards Western, going north, the next street, the industrial, it was clear down, the industrial parking for the area of the industrial area, they were jammed. People were walking all the way down to the facility. Now, the Planning Commission, they asked for a bicycle rack, which I requested. I don't know if they've done that, I don't take my time to go investigate. I hope that he did comply with that request of the amendment to his permission to be here today to add for further extensions. But I think having bicycle racks in there for the state law that alleviates account for traffics, which the traffic engineers quite well know the law, will help mitigate congestion down there, because we're shifting from a very urban rural environment to a very congested environment, and I think you're going to see more of that when you have the Burka Strangle. So, since you don't have the green code established or your zoning codes to collect that issue as you're going and building new developments, I would encourage you to put more bicycle racks in that area so people can park their car and ride their bike to the facility not have to be paid. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this issue? Hearing none at this time, we will close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, what is your...
I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we're going to, at this time, we're going to go into the second one, the second public hearing tonight, and it's going to be a long, long time before that happens. So we're going to take five minutes, 10 minutes, maybe we'll cut some cake right now, okay. I'd like to recognize three or four young gentlemen out there from Boy Scout Troop 270, is that correct?
Yes.
And what kind of a merit badge are you working on that you would be here? Citizenship and the community, okay. Okay, I want to bring items for consideration up forward, 9A through 9D.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Let them get home sometime before tomorrow.
9A is the purchase of a Ramco Rugged in-car computers for the police vehicles, and Travis Whitman is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater and members of the city council. I'm here this evening to obtain city council approval to purchase Patrol PC brand in-car mobile computers, also known as MCTs, from Ramco Rugged. The current MCTs in police cars were purchased in 2006. Recently added software and hardware components are unable to run on the existing hardware and software, making it necessary to replace the computers. Over the last year, the police department evaluated seven different computers and mounting solutions. Patrol PC solution was determined to be the best solution based on cost, features, serviceability, and the ability to upgrade, and level of durability that exceeded our standards. The MCTs are exposed to extreme conditions and durability is crucial. The pricey model is that it'll lower the normal cost as a city would be able to piggyback on a public bid process completed by the New Jersey State Police for the same computers. And pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code 2.50.060 subsection D, the Finance Director has determined that the Patrol PC computer and related mounting equipment that is the subject of this proposed purchase can only be purchased through... subject of this proposed purchase can only be purchased through Ramco Rugged. Ramco Rugged is a distributor located in Orange County, and having a local distributor is another benefit as it will minimize the downtime of computers in need of repair. The total cost of the purchase is $462,915.20, and this includes 55 MCTs with five-year warranties and related mounting equipment. Existing public safety restricted funds previously approved by the City Council will be used to make this purchase. It is recommended that City Council authorize the Finance Director to issue a purchase order to Ramco Rugged in the amount not to exceed $462,915.20 to purchase Patrol PC brand in-car computers consistent with and according to the pricing and contract terms of the New Jersey State policing bidding process. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I'll go ahead, Chris.
Chief or Captain, what is the lifespan of this equipment? You said a five-year warranty or guarantee or something like that. Is that in technology terms, is that long-term, short-term, average-term?
It's about the lifespan of the in-car computers. Our current in-car computers are older than five years, and they are currently out of warranty. They can go farther, but we plan to replace after five years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mine was the same question.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to 9B.
Mr. Mayor, 9B is to authorize the purchase of two fire engines, and Carter's here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, for your consideration, is a request to replace two of the four... or two of the city's older fire engines. Due to the age of the equipment, extensive repair history, and lack of necessary repair parts, their reliability has become questionable. Both of these vehicles have reached the end of their service life and require replacement. Experience has shown that the city's buying power is enhanced through joining with other public agencies to purchase fleet vehicles. After a review of the City of Newport Beach request for a proposal program for the purchase of a new fire engines, staff's determined that the proposal specifications met the standards required by our Department for Fire Engine Replacement. It is recommended that City Council authorize the Finance Director to issue a purchase order in the amount of $1,235,317.49 to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., for the purchase of two new fire engines. This concludes my report. Staff is now available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
This is probably one of the largest amount that I've seen during my time at the Council to approve. Can you please tell us what is the life of these trucks possibly?
Traditionally, they last 20 years is the depreciation cycle. However, we hang on to those a few years longer because the cost of raw materials, as you know, over a 20-year span will increase significantly. So we try to postpone them as long as possible. Sadly, doing this, sometimes the vendors go out of business, making parts, you know, very difficult to obtain and service virtually impossible towards the end of their life cycle.
And if we were not to approve this tonight, would that put a hindrance on the fire department's ability to perform adequate job?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Are we buying these with another organization?
Yeah, we're piggybacking off the City of Newport Beach RFP.
It makes sense.
Just a comment really for the public's purpose. One of the fire engines is a 1989.
Yes.
And the other one comes from...
Eighty-nine and a ninety.
Ninety. So and the manufacturer went out of business.
Right. And that company, like I said, is no longer business.
And with the new equipment, do we customize it to any of our specifications that we deem appropriate?
Yes, absolutely. The specs come out fairly generic, but each department hones them to meet their specific need.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
So $600,000 per vehicle is the...
Correct.
That's the good guy price based on teaming up with Newport Beach?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to 9C.
Mr. Mayor, 9C is a award of contract to Spillman Technologies for Public Safety Software, and Travis Whitman is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater, members of the Council. I'm here again to obtain City Council approval to award a contract to Spillman Technologies for public safety software and related components in the amount of $1,502,458 and subsequent years' annual maintenance costs pursuant to RFP number S, as in Sierra-1126. The police department last purchased a computer aided dispatch system in 1999, and over time has upgraded the hardware and software. The CAD is now beyond its end-of-life cycle. Our current records management system was custom-built by internal IT staff, and it was designed to fit records division processes that have been in place for more than 30 years. A review of these processes has revealed that they are not industry best practices. Over time, several third-party software components have been added to the system, such as an evidence tracker, a booking system, crime analysis mapping, and an automated report writing system. Some of the third-party applications could not fully integrate with CAD RMS, leading to numerous problems including delays in workflow, inaccurate and duplicate data, and redundant logins and data entry. A committee containing members from the police department and IT formed to analyze the system problems. It was determined that the most practical and cost-efficient method of implementing best practices was for the police department to seek proposals from vendors that offer a fully integrated CAD RMS software package. The RFP process began on January 29th of this year, and the proposal document was posted on the city's website. The RFP was advertised on January 29th of this year and re-advertised on February 5th. A mandatory pre-proposal meeting was held on February 13th with nine vendors in attendance. Three addenda were issued to answer questions from the proposers and to extend the proposal date from February 28th to March 31st of 2014. Five proposals were received by the due date, and the source selection committee began scoring process. The proposals were initially scored in three categories for best overall fit and compliance to the RFP to produce a short list of semifinalists. The categories included proposal response, functional specifications, and licensing. After totaling the scores, two vendors were not in the competitive range since their scores did not meet the minimum point threshold. The source selection committee continued to evaluate the remaining three vendors in the following categories: software demonstration, references, which included site visits, and pricing. The source selection committee unanimously voted for the highest-scoring proposer, Spillman Technologies, since they demonstrated a complete understanding of the project, offered a software system that best met the overall needs of the Garden Grove Police Department, received positive feedback from references, and offered competitive pricing, which was in line with the RFP requirements. In addition to the cost of the contract, $50,000 is needed to fund necessary support to the Internal Information Technology Department during the project management and implementation phase. The total cost for the project is $1,552,458. The police department has budgeted $400,000 from the general fund for the first year. The remaining first-year balance of $569,006 will be funded utilizing restricted law enforcement supplemental funding sources. The remaining project balance of $583,452 will be added to the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. It is recommended that the City Council award a contract to Spillman Technologies the highest-scoring proposer in the amount of $1,502,458 pursuant to available funds in the budget and supplemental funding. Approve the cost of maintenance fees during the duration of this agreement, which is subject to a 3% annual increase, and approve the cost of $50,000 for the Internal Information Technology Department support for this project. Approve the cost of not more than 10% of the contract amount for unforeseen expenses during the project management and implementation stages of the project with the approval of the city manager or his designee, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Captain, what's the life for this program?
The lifespan of the program in this particular vendor continuously updates and supports through the maintenance agreement, so it's indefinite.
And I also see here that the total cost is actually higher than the second runner-up, but we chose Spillman because of their superior total scores?
That's correct.
I both approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to 9D.
Mr. Mayor, 9D is an award of contract to RJ Noble Company for Brookers Street Reconstruction Project, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Tonight, Council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble Company to reconstruct Brookers Street from Chapman to Cotella Avenue. The work to be done is significant, and it will cause traffic delays in the area regardless of the efforts by staff and the contractor to minimize impacts. This is a complete redo. This work will include a complete removal and replacement of the pavement section along with the reconstruction of failed concrete such as curb gutter and sidewalk, along with other required work. The existing median was recently reconstructed and will remain in place. This work will be done at a cost of nearly $2.9 million. Staff received and opened six bids on August 14th of this year and determined that RJ Noble was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the Council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in mid-October and should be complete by March of next year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with Measure M and gas tax funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions for staff?
RJ Noble, do they do Valley View?
No.
Oh, good. Thank you. That's it.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none.
Quick one. There's currently a nice bike path that goes along there. Will the bike path be re...
Yep, yes, sir. It'll be restripped in accordance with our master plans.
Yep. As far as this, the time to do it now, Bill, was it because this is on a rolling basis as time for it to be repaired? Was there a need for it to do it at this point?
Oh, yes. The payment's in pretty bad shape right now. Brookers is, as a whole, is in bad shape.
Where did the money come from?
Measure M and gas tax.
How long will this last? What's our projection?
This should be a 20-year fix. I mean, we're going to have to maintain it at about a 10-year cycle with a slurry and probably about 15 with another overlay, but it's going to... We're replacing the entire section, so this is a long-term fix.
I heard some buzz the other day that there's kind of a call for more projects from OCTA for Measure M funds for this kind of stuff? Are we on top of that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're definitely applying.
I figured as much.
I can turn $1 into four. I will.
Yep. Good, thanks.
I'd like to move approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
We spent $10 million of your hard-earned money, ladies and gentlemen. Let's go to 7B.
Mr. Mayor, 7B is a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving amendment to the Main Street commercial area to allow an art gallery retail business with Tattoo Art Studio. And Aaron Webb is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mayor and council members, the first mention of this idea for a business happened on the reimagined downtown interactive website. The applicant posted the idea under the question, "What business would compel you to shop and spend time on Main Street and in the downtown area?" Give specific examples. And the applicant did, and he received many votes approving that. He's proposing the business at a location towards the south end of Main Street, which is in the new CC2 Civic Center Main Street Zone. The zoning was amended in 2011. The CC2 allows an art gallery outright, but tattoo parlors are not permitted. Tattoo general businesses are conditionally permitted in the other new mixed-use zones, the GGMU, the NMU, and the AR. The applicant was not interested in a standalone tattoo parlor, but he wanted a business that mixed an art gallery, including retail sales of art and clothing. The business plan also includes two stay-open paint nights, family paint days with children, workshops, seasonal art walks, fundraisers, and art openings. In order to allow the Tattoo Art Studio portion of the business, it requires a zoning code amendment to the CC2. It went through the normal pre-application process. Several committees reviewed it, all departments, head staff that looked at it. Comments received focused on preserving the pedestrian shopping character of Main Street by having a real art gallery with oil paintings and different media. Staff at the time asked the applicant to provide documentation of outreach to the Main Street Commission and the Main Street business owners as part of his submittal. So the applicant attended the Main Street Commission on March 13th, 2014, to introduce himself and his business concept. After hearing him speak, the Main Street Commission voted to put the proposed business on the agenda for the May 8th, 2014, meeting so they could officially recommend approval of the zone change to the City Council. In between the March 13th meeting and the May 8th meeting, city staff received letters of opposition to this proposed new business that required a zoning code amendment from the President and members of the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. At the Main Street Commission meeting on May 8th, the art gallery with Tattoo Art Studio was on the agenda. Seventeen members of the public spoke on the matter, nine spoke in support, and eight spoke against. In a vote of three to one, the Main Street Commissioners voted to not recommend the new use on Main Street to the City Council, citing concerns about the character of Main Street. The request for the code amendment and conditional use permit then went on to Planning Commission at the June 19th, 2014, meeting, with staff recommending that the amendment and conditional use permit be denied based on the recommendation of the Main Street Commission. The Planning Commission opened and held a public hearing, and 47 people spoke about the art gallery retail business with Tattoo Art Studio, nine in opposition, and 38 in favor of the proposed business. The Planning Commission voted unanimously, six-zero, directing staff to bring the item back to the July 17th meeting, with resolutions recommending the City Council approve the code amendment and approval of the conditional use permit. At the July 17th meeting, the Planning Commission adopted those two resolutions. Along with a definition for the new business, the code amendment includes special operating conditions and development standards that define the use, so as not to fundamentally alter the uses in the CC2 zone, but rather to allow business owner to propose a hybrid use that maintains the character of Main Street. The special conditions and standards include the requirement that the art gallery be located at the front of the business, that the tattoo studio be limited in size and smaller in-floor plan than the art gallery, and that a distant separation of 500 feet be between any of these art gallery tattoo art studios. There is a letter and an email of support, which we received and attached to your staff report. There are six letters in opposition and one in support that I believe are a yellow that you have received. There are also many other submittals that happened throughout this process that are included in a master list as Attachment 10, and those are letters of both opposition and in favor and petitions. It is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing, determine that the ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15061B3, and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance, which reads: "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment number A-008-2014, a code amendment to allow an art gallery retail trade business with a tattoo art studio use in the CC2 Civic Center Main Street Zone, subject to conditional use permit approval." That's my staff report, and I'm here to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we will open up the public hearing. I have a card here for Myra Zenet, something like that. It's got five names on it. I don't know if this is going to be a quintet or what.
Nope, just me, but I have... What we've decided to do, just to make this less... an easier evening, is there's five people who are going to stand up who are also in support. Pat and Patty Callahan, Doug Gibson, Whitney Bag, and Eric Weintraub. So that way, everybody's not going to be talking or not going to be here all night. So, hi, welcome. Thank you for having us here. I'm the director of video production at USC, and as a part of my job, I need to do a lot of research and ask a lot of questions. of research and ask a lot of questions. So what happened when I found out that, you know, they were gonna need to get this rezoned, I wanted to see if there was any precedence for this. So I found that there were. Danville, Illinois, commission members recommended approving a special use permit to operate a tattoo studio fused with an antique studio in downtown Danville. Bryan, Texas, the city's planning a zoning commission unanimously recommended allowing the first-ever tattoo studio to open up in downtown. Albany, New York, February of this year, Albany City Commission struck down part of an old ordinance that prohibits tattoo studios from operating in downtown Albany, saying "Tattoo studios of today have progressed beyond their old stereotypes." The local news station said, "The city's move to update the ordinance is the very type of progressive thinking necessary to breathe life into a struggling downtown." Right in Colorado, amend zone code to allow tattoo shop, pro temp mayor Wayne Scott is quoted in the article as saying, "Tattoo shops are commonplace now," and he doesn't see much difference between them and beauty salons. There was one councilwoman who had voted up as in opposition, the idea that downtown might not be appropriate for a tattoo studio. Councilman Rex Bell countered, saying that tattoo shops are a generation thing and expressing prejudice by zoning is not really acceptable to me. This'll only be three minutes. Reesburg, Wisconsin, opened an art gallery tattoo studio on Main Street, Reesburg Planning Commission unanimously approved the conditional use permit under the city's zoning ordinance. Tampa Bay, Florida, last month, the city council voted to allow a tattoo studio in downtown. Mayor Doug Beavis said, "I know attorneys and vice mayors that have tattoos." So a little closer to home. Two years ago, downtown Tustin went through a zoning change, and their city council approved a tattoo studio to open in their historic downtown area. Also in Long Beach, November 2012, the Long Beach Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for their first tattoo shop to open in downtown Long Beach in more than half a century. This is in the historic Lafayette Building. All these shops are still in business. So with, it's a $1.6 billion, $1.65 billion industry, 26 to 40 percent, yeah, sorry, 40 percent of US people, between 26 and 40, have at least one tattoo. 59% of these are women. So with the, the reason, the proliferation of these tattoo studios in these downtown areas are because people who are getting tattoos want to have these upscale areas to go to. We want to have this in Garden Grove. We don't want people who want to have a tattoo to have a nice experience to go out to dinner to maybe get an ice cream, to go to Orange, or to go to Fullerton, or go to Santa Ana. We want to keep them here so they can walk around the area, they can walk around downtown Main Street and have something to eat before or after. So I recommend that the city council approve the Black Umbrella Art Gallery and Tattoo Studio, and I thank you.
Evening, Mayor, council, staff. My name is Bob Ramsey. I live in Glendora, but I work at 9851 Bixby at Living Spring Church. I'm one of the pastors there. I'm not speaking on behalf of the church. I'm speaking on behalf of someone who makes the choice to come to Garden Grove and be engaged in the city of Garden Grove with my professional life. One of the reasons I made the decision to come and work at Living Spring is because Living Spring is rooted in the community of Garden Grove that actually exists. One of the lines that we use at our church is that we have an address, that we are not just incidentally in Garden Grove, but we are intentionally and passionately engaged with Garden Grove. And as I was looking at churches to engage with, you know, a lot of churches sadly are rooted in the past, and they're being nostalgic, often for a past that never existed, or will often use "we" in a way that only includes some of us. And one of the reasons I'm very happy to be at Living Spring and very happy to be in Garden Grove is that that is not the case for our church. And it seems to me that the Planning Commission made a similar value judgment when they made the decision to approve Black Umbrella, that Main Street was an appropriate place for this kind of business in a way that addresses the community as it actually is, rather than other visions for it along the way. To speak, I want to speak too, to the actual issue. Main Street is in the business of making money, and I would suggest, out of my own experience of having been one of Curtis' customers, I have one tattoo, that there are, there are a couple of things that really commend this. One is that Black Umbrella will bring two different discrete revenue streams to the Main Street area. The art gallery will be doing something that is not happening at any other place, and will bring a group of people to the Main Street that is incredibly compatible with the group that is already there. And also, the tattoo aspect of the business will also bring people who will have a passionate connection to downtown. My own experience of getting a tattoo, I found out that it was rather intense. It hurt a lot. And I, my daughter came with me. It was a really awesome experience. Most people, when they get tattoos, bring people with them. My daughter was with me. It was a really powerful experience. We went out to celebrate afterwards, and we went to Bruxie in Orange. If this had already been approved, we probably would have had that meal at Louis' or Zlackett's, and that part of my heart that's attached to that experience would be attached to Main Street. And I encourage you to help other people have that same experience. So I'm asking you to support the Planning Commission's decision and recommendation and support Black Umbrella on Main Street. Thank you.
Starts with a C?
Well, you'd never know that was a C. Sitwell, I don't even know how to pronounce him.
I am one of the new business owners over by Main Street on Garden Grove Boulevard and Main Street, on historic Main Street. Me and my brothers started the business about a month ago, on the 19th. And Curtis came to us and said, "We're looking for, you know, support for this." And I looked at it as an aspect of a different class of people coming, an increase in revenue, something that could potentially help my business. I apologize, I'm shaking a little bit, I have bad anxiety issues. And I am 23, and people look at me like, "What? And I have tattoos. And my tattoos are my memories. They are experiences. You know, I have the Lord's Prayer on my back." So, but I just wanted to come down and say that I do support Curtis and Black Umbrella. So, short and sweet for you guys.
Again, we have a number of number of names on here.
See, really, the Lord's Prayer on your back? That's hardcore, man. That is great.
How do you read it that way?
Yeah. My name's John Rittenhouse. I am the pastor of Living Spring Christian Fellowship at 9851 Bixby Avenue. If you took a map of Garden Grove and you tried to put it, your finger right in the middle, that you'd be right close to where we are. We love Garden Grove very dearly, and our church is committed to being a part of the community, a real bright light, hopefully, in the community. And as most everyone on the council and the mayor know our story, we have invested a lot of time and money into our community, both our immediate community and the surrounding areas. This year in May, we fixed up our 13th and 14th Garden Grove home for some families that couldn't do the work themselves. And we ditched church and we kinda all went together. There was about 150 of us that did that. In the time that we've had a food ministry there, we've passed out about 10,000 bags of groceries to Garden Grove residents who are in need. Last year, in Christmas time, we provided Christmas for 650 Garden Grove kids, and we worked with 11 schools to find out the neediest kids, and we got them Christmas. And the list goes on. We, in my office right now are 70 backpacks that are filled up with stuff, and we'll be working with eight schools to find the neediest kids for that. The reason I bring these things up is not that this really has anything to do with Living Spring. Living Spring isn't an institution or a brand. It's filled with people. All of this stuff I talked about, the fixing up the homes and all that, happens because there are people who are willing to sacrifice quite a bit of time and quite a bit of money, and those people have tattoos. They're part of our community. And what I would submit is that they are part of the Garden Grove community as well, that a tattoo shop is not really something new from the standpoint of, we'll be either keeping some people out or inviting some people in. They are us. And, you know, being a pastor, I understand about change being difficult, and I'm not for change just because you're supposed to change. I preach from a book that in some places is 3,400 years old. And so there are some things I don't think should ever change, the things that make Garden Grove great, our racial diversity and our love for the family and all those different things. And so I just wanted to point out that the tattooed community is already here. And I noticed last week that Mayor Broadwater joined Facebook for the first time, which is kind of a Christmas miracle. In and of it-
I have no idea.
But as I was reading your wall, stalking you, and I was, I saw how you were embraced into that community, and it's a community that's already existed that is a great tool. And all I'm saying is that a tattoo shop on Main Street, I think, would be a way to embrace a community that's already here. So, thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor, and city council and staff members. My name's Yoda Reinberg. I'm a resident in Garden Grove, and also an artist. And I represent here my husband Jeff Reinberg and Cameron Palm. I'm speaking on their behalf as well. Why is Umbrella Art Studio a good idea on Main Street? It's diversity, and we have diversity here in the city, different artists on the street. I live one, we have maybe 10 different nationalities. I'm myself an immigrant from Germany, so I do support, and we do support, diversity in the city. So, for instance, right now, there's a car show on Fridays, and it would be great to have an art walk supported by Black Umbrella on Saturdays perhaps. Myself and my husband, we right now go to Fullerton, or Santa Ana, or Laguna Beach, because something like that doesn't exist here. So, the second thing, a younger crowd, you know, I have kids, 25 and 30, and they go to Newport, they go to other places. They say Garden Grove is dead, and we don't like to go there. So, and they have a lot of friends with tattoos as well. And also, the main reason, I believe, like Garden Grove just spent $10 million, would be to increase revenue in the city. So, and that could be by bringing more crowd here, people who buy art and spend money on tattoos, and afterwards go and have dinner. So, at the art walk, a featured artist would be Alan Smith from Ontario, Strange and Vinsical Art from Ontario, Andrew Hansen, Artsy Craftsman from Garden Grove in Many Mediums, then from Westminster, Ruth, featuring oil-on-canvas realism. Number five would be Neil Akri, sculptures made from recycled instruments. And of course, Curtis Gibson. I'm a, I love his art. He does great portraits, and he just recently did a painting for us. My husband's in the military, so he did a painting in his uniform, and a rhino head, because that's his nickname. So, and that's in our home right now. So, he does fantastic portraits and surrealism. So, and watercolors. And myself, I'm an abstract artist. You can see some of those pictures there. I have a website on Facebook as well. It's pretty bold. I like to express myself in colors and emotions and feelings, what happens around us. For instance, the tsunami, I created a painting from that. And that top one there, I dedicated it to the military. My husband served in Afghanistan for a year, and it was a very emotional painting based on what I felt during that time when he was gone in Afghanistan. So, that's why I believe, or we believe, that Umbrella Studio would be a great idea on Main Street. So, and the type of paintings would be abstract landscapes, realism, acrylic on canvas, watercolor on paper, mixed media, as you can see and on the website as well. And the paint night, I attended in Huntington Beach when he had his location there. It was fun, but I work full-time and do my art part-time, and frankly, it's not convenient to go to a different city to attend a paint night. I rather would do that here in Garden Grove. And other artists, I'm sure, would do the same. And it also, we can share ideas and perhaps work on a painting together in cooperation. Also, I like community events, and I love to participate, participate in exposing kids and families to the visual arts. I also go to Living Springs, and I'm involved in a lot of community services there as well. And in closing, for these reasons of bringing diversity, a younger crowd, and the arts to Garden Grove to increase city revenue, please approve the zone change to allow Black Umbrella Art Studio to operate on Main Street. Thank you very much.
There we go. My name is Jeanne Vier. It's a really hard pronunciation. Jeanne Vier Vargas, and I'm a Garden Grove resident, lived here with my husband for about 10 years, and we have a daughter, and I work as an office administrator also in Garden Grove for about eight years. And I just, I have kind of an extensive list that I wanted to submit for the official record, if that's okay? Do I give that to you? Thank you. But the list is basically over 70 cities throughout the country who have been named either best historic district, best downtown, or best for young families. And all of the names on this list have at least one operating tattoo business within their boundaries. Within Orange County, I'm just gonna name off a couple here, within the cities in Orange County that have downtowns or Main Streets, seven of them have tattoo studios, six of those are historic cities. The top three best downtowns in Orange County, as named by the OC Register, all have tattoo studios. That's Historic Orange was first, Historic Fullerton was second, and third was Huntington Beach. In California, out of the best cities named for young families, seven of those have tattoo studios operating. Again, there's, there are a lot of cities on that list that have been recognized as good places to visit and good places to bring the family, good places to bring your business, because they are successful, they're thriving, they're interesting, they're attractive, they're diverse, they're unique, and they all gained that recognition while having operating tattoo studios in that city. And it clearly was not anything that prevented that recognition from being given to them, possibly even encouraged it, depending on the city. And the historic areas were able to preserve the historical heritage and character that we want to preserve on Main Street, even though they had operating tattoo businesses within their boundaries as well. we need to start integrating businesses that do appeal to that mainstream culture that we have now. And I think this list also suggests that, you know, there's been some concerns raised of whether Black Umbrella would be appropriate in a Main Street area like that we have or for a historic area. And I think this list says that tattoo businesses are appropriate for historical areas, they're appropriate for downtown areas, and they're appropriate for areas that attract young families and without sacrificing those values and heritage that downtowns and historical areas represent. So, I'm also representing a few other people, Joe Sulak, Nina Sulak, Joey Vargas, and Xander Morris, who are all Garden Grove residents. Thank you for your time.
John Q. U. I. G. G. L. E. Quigle?
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and speaking on these various subjects. It's great to see all this civic engagement. It's a wonderful thing. Before I begin, I also want to state that I'm speaking for a few other people, again, just to expedite this whole thing. I'm speaking for both Brian and Shanti Shuler, as well as my wife, Celia Quigle. They are all residents of Garden Grove. A lot has been made of what constitutes the character of Main Street. That's been the overarching kind of criticism of bringing Black Umbrella to Main Street, is it doesn't reflect the character. But I want to ask, what really defines the character? Is it just the type of business? Well, there's been a slew of businesses where I think a lot of people would be surprised finding it in a historical district. And make no mistake, I'm not being critical of any of these businesses, well, with exception to one that I'm going to mention. But I support these businesses coming to Main Street. I think it's great to have a vibrant, diverse economic activity. But historically, and this is the business that I didn't support finding out what kind of went on, but there was a massage parlor on Main Street that had some seedy activity going on, and this was years ago, but that was on historic Main Street. There's been a smoke shop, a Zumba studio, an insurance office, a big corporate bank, a tax office. I mean, these are businesses where I don't exactly think, hey, good old times, you know, back in the day type of businesses. I completely support most of their presence on Main Street because I like having businesses excited about operating in my neighborhood. But is it really the business type that defines the character? I don't necessarily think it does. No, I think the character is defined by the people. The people that go, that walk those streets, that work those jobs, which I work at both Louis' on Main and the Globe, and I really like that street. I didn't spend any time down there in the past, but I've grown, I've grown to love the people on that street. The multi-generation, diverse collection of people that have all these stories dating back half of, half a century. You know, people that remember Louis' when it was the Rainbow Room, talking about Zlakets, you know, 60 years ago. That is great, and it's the people that make that street. And nobody, nobody in opposition to Black Umbrella has personally criticized either Curtis' character or the character of anyone that supports him. They have all said that he's a stand-up guy, raising a family in Garden Grove here. And I find it troubling that they would acknowledge his good character and still be critical of the business that he wants to bring. His good character is going to wash off on that business. Tattooing is not an intrinsically negative business if you have a good man running it. And Curtis is a good man, and he attracts good people. I was at his old tattoo studio in Huntington Beach, and there was a large, there was a diverse assortment of clientele, all of which were friendly, all of which were kind, good-natured, and he's going to bring that same quality to Main Street. All he wants to do is support it by motivating art in an area where there's not much of it. He wants to generate revenue, and he wants to encourage foot traffic, which every other business can benefit from. I think that the opposition is just an arbitrary exclusion, given some of the other businesses that have operated and continue to operate on Main Street. I think that it is the duty of us as Garden Grove residents to support business, because I see a lot of empty storefronts on Main Street, and it's tragic. It is our historic downtown, and we need to encourage business. And it's foolish to use tattooing as an arbitrary exclusion to, to prevent, sorry, I'm just kind of losing track. It's foolish to arbitrarily exclude his business on the fact that it is tattooing, something that many, many years ago had a history of attracting a negative element. Those days are gone. The people make the place. Curtis is a good man, he has a good family, and he has good friends. The people make the place, and we're trying to make that place awesome. So, I'm John Quigle, and I support Black Umbrella. Thank you all very much.
I'm not even going to try your last name.
Hi, thank you. I'm Chantal LaRue. Sounds a lot easier than it looks, so. And I'm also going to be speaking on behalf of Billy LaRue and Kelly Ott. We are all Garden Grove residents. Back in November, the historic Main Street of Garden Grove's Facebook page provided a link to a blog by Blake Roberts on downtown planning and placemaking. In one of his articles, he makes reference to Jane Jacobs, author of Death and Life of Great American Cities, and well-known activist in planning and development of urban cities that promote natural, social exchanges within a community. He said that her book had been hailed for its many insights, but in his mind, the most important one was that the planners and policymakers need to observe and respond to how the people actually use cities and not how we think they should be used. We believe that it is a responsibility to city officials to recognize the actual desire of their residents, of what they need and want, more than fulfilling an overall plan. In other words, that the city should take its cue from the people rather than a specific vision. That is not to say that the overall feel and charm that is desired should be dismissed, but that the people of Garden Grove should be able to have an establishment available to them that are to use and desire within that setting. Please take note that tattoo shops account for $2.3 billion in annual revenue, that 30%, 36% of age 25, and 40% of those aged 26 to 40 have, also have at least one tattoo. The median age of a Garden Grove resident is 34 and a half years old. This accounts for a large amount of the city's residents that fall within this spectrum and potential clientele for a tattoo and art studio. Of course, we are aware that the issue comes down to whether or not the residents come to Main Street to obtain that tattoo, because the city does allow tattoo shops in other locations within Garden Grove. However, to quote Jane Jacobs, whom I mentioned before, "There is no logic that can be superimposed on the city. People make it, and it is them, not the building that must fit our plans." Of course, we all seem to be on the same page when it comes to the need of revitalizing our downtown. But we need to be alert to the fact that we are designing a street for the people, not strictly for the buildings. And we also need to be honest with the people, who are the people of these, excuse me, we also need to be honest with who those people in this city are. As a final quote from Jane Jacobs, "Cities have the ability to provide something for everyone, excuse me, only because and only when they are created by everyone." Curtis Gibson and his family have a beautiful vision as an addition to our Main Street and overall community. We believe it will be vital to the success of all the additional planning for the Main Street that is already in place. They care deeply for the city and have strong family values in mind and first and foremost, which is why there is such a strong emphasis on the art gallery portion of the business as well. My husband and I purchased our home just down the street from Main Street five years ago. We also have a one and a half-year-old daughter. And currently, we do not even consider Main Street as a point in destination, but more of a pathway to Costco. We are excited to be involved in the changes being made on Main Street, and we very much want Black Umbrella Art and the Gibson family a part of that, and to see Main Street grow into the potential that we know it has. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, and happy birthday, if I can add that. I was, I'm speaking also for Sarah Rodriguez and Gunner Barrera in the interest of time. I was going to start with reference right off of your mission for Garden Grove, but I think, I was going to end with it, but I think I'm going to start with it. The Garden Grove mission statement includes the phrase, "The continuous pursuit of creativity and innovation in the way we do business." And so under that, I think it's the perfect segue to start my speech. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Black Umbrella Art and Tattoo Studio. Some other speakers gave statistics. Some of these are a little different, but they're, they're pretty close. Stanford University article states that this is a $2.3 billion industry, and it's now recognized as mainstream. They also estimate that 21% of adults, and double that number for adults under the age of 40, have at least one tattoo. This is a legitimate and viable business. Black art, Black Umbrella Art and Tattoo Studio will provide a venue for local artists. They'll bring the art experience to children and their families on their special nights, and absolutely bring new patrons, increased foot traffic, and additional revenue to Main Street businesses and to the city of Garden Grove. As evidenced by the remarkable number of people that have attended all of these prior meetings and signed petitions of support, this is something that the public and current and future patrons of Main Street will embrace. True, a tattoo studio has never been part of Main Street, and this is a change. However, there's a process by which citizens, voters, and the community can propose change. This is that process at work, and these are your constituents, your voters and your community making their voices heard. I urge your consent and your approval of what your Garden Grove Planning Commission has already approved as part of this time-honored and important process. Bring Black Umbrella to Main Street. You won't regret it. Thank you for your time.
KP Kip Smith?
Thank you for your time. My name's Kip Smith, current resident. I'm speaking on behalf of Tad Sawyer, as well as my father, Brian Smith, a 30-plus-year resident of Garden Grove. I would like to start out with a quote by Dr. Mantel, who for more than 30 years has successfully been bringing upbeat, friendly, and helpful psychological insights to individuals, families, and businesses in San Diego as a clinical and corporate psychologist in private practice. He's been a regular on Good Morning America, KFMB-TV, News 8. He's appeared on Oprah, Larry King Live, The Today Show, authored two bestselling books, and speaks regularly for audiences throughout the country. And he says, "The world is divided into two kinds of people, those who have tattoos and those who are afraid of people with tattoos." Honestly, I was raised to be among the latter group. After all, who did I know, growing up in Newark, New Jersey, the weak-a-chick section? Who had tattoos? Sailors, criminals, thugs, greasers, and just bad guys. The fact is, tattoo lovers are a proud lot. They are, they have consciously taken the decision to tattoo their bodies and would like to proudly declare who and what they are. They are ordinary people like you and me, except that they have strong sense of identity and they have no intention of hiding. They are not scared of public opinion and would love to let others know what they believe in, and good for them. Over the centuries, instead of becoming an extinct practice, tattoos have gained in popularity, which only goes to prove that it has stood the test of time." His quote ends there. "I have gone to all of the previous meetings that have been held in regards to this discussion, and one statement that I've heard from the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and the zoning commission alike is that this, in quotes, 'This discussion isn't about tattoos.'" "I feel that we need to remember this in order to accomplish what both the city and what the Gibsons want. We aren't talking about tattoos. We're talking about a family wanting to open up a business that will bring revenue into Main Street and that will promote values consistent with the idea of reimagined downtown." With all that talk of reimagined downtown, one would have a hard time arguing that Main Street doesn't need a makeover. It clearly does. With a handful of vacancies declining or barely profitable businesses, and more bars than any one street needs within a quarter mile of each other, it cannot be made more clear that this street needs something new. With that said, the Gibsons are offering something new, which is over a $1.5 billion industry, which over 45 Americans partake of, and that is no longer stereotyped by rebels, gangsters, ex-cons, or pirates. The image and stereotype of people with tattoos is changing. Every day, working professionals who contribute to society and hold their responsibilities are a growing part of the clientele of the average tattoo shop. Give Black Umbrella a chance, give Main Street a chance. Thank you.
I am a Garden Grove resident, and I'm in support of Black Umbrella Art Studio. I'm going to read to you a couple of portions from some articles. This first one is from Hoag Levens, and it says, "America's core culture reference books, professional journals, newspapers, and magazines recognize tattooing as a well-established art form that, over the last three decades, has undergone dramatic changes. In the 1970s, artists trained in traditional fine art disciplines began to embrace tattooing and brought with them entirely new sorts of sophisticated imagery and technique. Advances in electric needle machines and pigments, entire, sorry, and pigments provided them with new ranges of color, delicacy of detail, and aesthetic possibilities. The physical nature of many local tattooing establishments has also changed as increasing numbers of operators adapt equipment and procedures assembled, resembled those of medical clinics, particularly in the areas where tattooing is regulated by government health agencies. The cultural status of tattooing has steadily evolved from that of an antisocial activity in the 1960s to that of a trendy fashion statement in the 1990s. First adopted by, and flaunted by influential rock stars like the Rolling Stones in the early 1970s, tattooing had, by the late 1980s, become accepted by over a broader segment of mainstream society. Today, tattoos are routinely seen on rock stars, professional sports figures, ice skating champions, fashion models, movie stars, and other public figures who play a significant role in setting the cultural, contemporary, the, sorry, in setting the culture's contemporary morals and behavior patterns. In the last 15 years, two distinct classes of tattooed businesses have emerged. The first is the tattoo parlor that glorifies, in a sense, of urban outlaw culture, advertise itself with garish exterior signage, offers pictures off the wall, assembly-line services, and often operates with less than optimal sanitary procedures. The second is the tattoo art studio." The second is the tattoo art studio that most frequently features custom fine art designs, the ambiance of an upscale beauty salon, marketing campaigns aimed at middle and upper-class professionals, and by appointment-only services. Today, fine art tattoo studios draw the same kind of clientele as a custom jewelry store, fashion boutique, or high-end, high-end antique shop. The marketing demographics for tattoo services are now skewed heavily toward mainstream consumers. Tattooing today is the sixth fastest-growing business in the United States. The single fastest-growing demographic group seeking tattoo services is, to the surprise of many, middle-class suburban women. Tattooing is recognized by government agencies as both an art form and a professional tattoo-related artwork is the subject of museum, gallery, and educational institutions across the United States. Governor's proclamation in 1982, he had said, as it, as, sorry, prepared for an international convention of tattoo artists, the governor's office of California issued an official proclamation that declared, "The tattoo is primal parent of visual arts. It has reemerged as a fine art attracting highly-trained and skilled practitioners. Current creative approaches are infused with traditional disciplines with new vigor and meaning. At a time when these artists from around the world met in California to share, teach, and celebrate their skills, it seemed appropriate to remind Californians that the tattoo is indeed one of the most ancient arts." In Esquire magazine in 1989, it was reported, "Seritus artists are joining the ranks of tattooers," and they're-
Desiree, your time has run out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we are just one-third through the cards here, so we are probably gonna take another break and a few more speakers, so we'll go with Cecilia Helms.
My name is Cecilia Helmers, and I'm speaking for Petra Crane, Jason Crane, and my husband, Gary Helmers. I'm a resident of Garden Grove and have been for over 20 years. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer in Garden Grove. So, why did I move here to Garden Grove? Well, I moved here to be close to my parents, who live near my retired uncles and my retired aunts in Garden Grove, and I'm now 62 years old. So, why do I tell you all this? Because I too now join this group of retired people of Garden Grove. During the past months, I've been hearing a lot about this reimagining campaign here in Garden Grove, and I was kind of excited to hear that our leaders in Garden Grove, you, were thinking about considering the change of the character of Garden Grove from an older, quiet, retired community with businesses who serve the retired community to a young, more vibrant, growing community, one with more cultural diversity. So I thought, well, do I really want Garden Grove to change now that I'm becoming the retired person? And I thought about it, and I thought, well, you know what? I believe reimagining is imagining Garden Grove for the next generation. I mean, the truth is, whether you like to hear it or not, you, we, will not be running this city in the next, what, 10 years? Maybe 15 years? Some of you even maybe 20? Whatever. Guess who will?
Maybe three months.
There you go. You know? It's gonna be these young people back here. They're the ones. They are the 20 and 30-somethings who care enough for Garden Grove that they will spend months on a project like bringing a tattoo studio, art studio, to Main Street. Now, why do you think it's so important to them? Because Garden Grove is the only place they can get a space? Hardly. No. It's because they're from Garden Grove. They care enough about Garden Grove to engage in the politics, even, of Garden Grove and the reimagining campaign, and they want to do business for the community of Garden Grove. That's us. That's me. I care about that. I want you to be able to spend those $10 million fixing up Garden Grove. I, I want that, but it requires new businesses to come in and make that possible. They're just trying to bring young, new blood to our city, new ideas, fresh ideas. Don't fight them. Join them. Don't discourage them. Encourage them to reimagine Garden Grove for the next generation, the future of Garden Grove. I urge you to bring Black Umbrella to Main Street. It will bring new revenue and new life to Main Street. Thank you.
That lady alone will bring new life to Garden Grove. Somebody named Ben?
I'm in the overflow.
Okay, Ben, you're no longer going to speak. Okay, Charles Mitchell, we're gonna hear Charles Mitchell, and then we're gonna take five minutes.
Are you going to the other side? I'm opposing.
I don't care whether you oppose it or not.
All right then. Thank you again for Mr. Mayor for the opportunity to speak before the council. As chairman of the Main Street Commission, I presided during a discussion concerning changing some parts of the municipal code to allow the operation of a tattoo studio on Main Street. It was a majority opinion to vote in opposition to this change. The Downtown Garden Grove Business Owners Association also voted unanimously to oppose this change. The city staff recommended that the council oppose this change. Since then, the city staff has apparently changed their position. We are of the view that this business will not be of benefit to the wholesome atmosphere which we try hard to convey to our visitors. Thank you.
I don't have to give my address, name, okay, sorry.
Why didn't she have to give her address?
Well, the last meeting, I forgot, and then, so just making sure I got all my, everything covered here. I'm Kristin Gibson. I am the wife of Curtis Gibson and co-owner of Black Umbrella Art Studio. I have some information to submit to the record. So these are some petitions that we have. The total amount of signatures on our petition, which was to agree to change the zone, to allow an art gallery, tattoo studio, fusion on Main Street, and we had 1,318 signatures on both a handwritten one, where we went to people and asked, and we also had one on change.org, and 624 of those were Garden Grove residents. And so, those are people who we talked to, who thought, of course, this is a great idea, or thought, I've never heard of that, tell me more, and we had to talk to some people for 10 minutes, and then they thought it was a great idea. Some people said, I'll sign it, of course. There were people who didn't want to sign it, and that was great, but we took our time, a lot of time, to knock on people's doors. Chris, I don't know if you know how that goes, but it's time-consuming.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's time-consuming and hot, and we're very passionate about this. We really want to be on Main Street for a reason. The biggest question we got during this whole process was, why Main Street? You know, like, wouldn't it be easier to go somewhere else? Why are you going through all this trouble? And yeah, we would have been open in December of last year if we went somewhere else, and we decided to go through this process because of Reimagine. And we saw that the city was serious about Main Street and Garden Grove, and that somebody still cared. And we respect and appreciate the people on Main Street who fought and kept going with little support. Scott Weimer, his friends, we really do respect them. We appreciate the benches. We appreciate what they did. But the problem is, it needs more. There needs to be more people involved. There needs to be other generations involved as well, and so Reimagine was really exciting for us to start the process. And I just want to share with you what we've done so far on the street. We are not open, obviously, but we have been hoping to open for a while now, and we had an event for a car show on Friday night, where we had people bring art supplies to donate to the Boys and Girls Club. We had about four bagfuls of art supplies from our clients, our friends, and our family who came to Garden Grove Main Street for a car show night. Some of them had never been before. Some of them went all the time. It varied. We have also, we are in the process of doing a competition, like a raffle thing. If you eat at Slackett's and you spend more than $10 and take a picture of your receipt and post it to us on Facebook, they are entered in to win a free tattoo, up to $350. We are trying to get people to get excited, or people who have never tried Slackett's, to go and support them by buying food. We have also met with several business owners and talked to several people on the street. A lot of that petition are actually from people that we've met on Main Street that we saw with tattoos, and we said, hey, guess what we're trying to do? And they all signed it. So, I will leave you with the number of 624 Garden Grove residents that signed our petition. Thank you.
Sometimes people leave after-
I'm Matt Provincio. I grew up in Garden Grove, lived here for 16 years until I moved to Idaho with my family, decided I had enough of that, and moved back to California, actually moved back to Garden Grove. Kind of wanna do a little social experiment. City council, have you guys seen this kind of response?
You get to say anything you want to.
Okay.
What you don't get to do is ask questions.
Okay. Never mind, then. Basically, I'm here, I'm a, I'm a friend of Curtis Gibson. He's actually done a tattoo of mine. Does amazing work. The kind of environment he creates when he does tattooing, I, I've only been to one other artist and was nothing like it. The, the first artist I went to wasn't a, wasn't a great experience, but the environment Curdy, as we call him, creates is, is a very friendly, very open atmosphere. Definitely, definitely plan on going to him for, for future tattoos. I think Main Street would be a great place for him to be. It would be a positive thing to come to Main Street. Definitely bring more revenue. The tattoo process, you don't just walk in and say, that one, and get going. The way he works is he wants, or you kind of come up with an idea of what you want. He takes his time and draws it out, and during that time, people can go walk other businesses, visit the antique store, or get something to eat, and, and then come back for the tattoo. So there's not just revenue at his, at his business, but at neighboring businesses as well. So I'm definitely pro-Black Umbrella on Main Street. I think it'd be definitely a positive thing for downtown Main Street and for Garden Grove in general. So, thank you.
Hi, guys. How are you tonight? I'm Dani. I lived in Garden Grove my whole life. I attended Rancho Alameda's High School. I was one of the GGEA scholarship winners. I was very involved in school, very involved in my community, and a lot of organizations that help out Garden Grove. And I am absolutely 100% for the Black Umbrella. I do trend, trend and forecast research in the fashion industry, as well as small businesses. We do branding, marketing, and, and a part of that is like looking at what city these businesses are going in and seeing where they're spending their money. Or, I mean, I'm sorry, where, or what their clientele wants, you know, and where they're gonna spend the money, and, you know, that's through the location and whatnot. Our downtown Garden Grove is not downtown. I went to school in downtown Los Angeles. That is downtown. Fullerton is downtown. Huntington Beach is downtown. What they're proposing is to make this downtown. It's time for Garden Grove to bring in some businesses that will make this a destination, not just a location that's there. I go to Louis', that's about it. That's because my friends go there. That's because my family goes there. I would love to be able to take my friends, my family, to Garden Grove. So, let's make a positive change in the community. Let's make a little, you know, move into new century things. Tattoos are normal. People have them. I don't personally, but let's do this for Garden Grove, right? And do these for this great family that I know.
I'm Carlos Jimenez. I'm a resident. I'm also a business owner. I own a body shop in Garden Grove. I'm also a staff sergeant, a veteran. I served in Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Enduring Freedom, and New Dawn. I only share this with me because, oh, I'm sorry. I only share this with you because I've been discriminated against my, for my appearance, my tattoos, and I feel like Black Umbrella is kind of discriminated against as being only a tattoo parlor, when they, they obviously have more to offer. It's also giving an art gallery, and I think it's gonna be very good for Main Street and for the community. There are times where me and my wife go down to Main Street, we have breakfast or lunch, and we wanna walk around Main Street, and there's really nothing else to do there but eat or drink. Everything- Everything else is closed, so we end up just leaving to, you know, a neighboring city to go have some entertainment. So I really do believe that they're going to be a great factor in helping Garden Grove grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Sherbrell.
Hello, I'm Jim Sherbrell. I'm a business owner and a president of Downtown Business Association. Just want to share a few things that the association's been doing. June 20th of this year, we had probably more people on Main Street than has ever been on Main Street. With the Volkswagen car show that we put on, we had sponsors from Garden Grove Volkswagen. We had Walmart involved, other sponsors for that. We had national exposure. We had Hot VWs Magazine. We've got a lot of pictures on their website and everything from the show. So it was a really, really good event. As the association, we've been trying to plan events and get people from outside the area to come to Main Street that's never been there. We had at the Volkswagen show, people from Las Vegas, Northern California, Canada, Europe, all here for the first time, and they loved the venue that we had. Since that time, we've have, we have, next week, or September 12th, we will have people coming down here, caravanning from Canada, to end up at this location for their car show on Friday night. We've got other Volkswagen, people have contacted us, other venues that they have, people wanting to know if we would do something here, an event for them. We've also have a event planner that we're talking with, and we want to have family events going on every month for the weekend. So if we can have something special every month to draw people, families down to Main Street, is something that we've been working on. I know there's a lot of people in our association. We have about 100 members. Not all of them were able to vote when we voted for a resolution against changing the code. But we have some people on the street that have also voted, or had signed a petition for Black Umbrella. Some of them are no longer there. Some of them have their business for sale, and they don't plan on being there for the duration. And we do. We're working very hard to bring some changes, and we enjoy the fact that the code has kind of kept Main Street kind of quaint, although some people don't think so. But we are active, and we're currently trying to do some things to change that and bring people there. And we would just ask that you would leave the code the way it is, that we can continue to operate that way. And we have got nothing against Black Umbrella, but I think if the code changed, it just leaves the door open for other businesses that aren't desirable to come in there. That's all I have. Thank you.
John Wildsmith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, and citizens of Garden Grove. I'm asking for a no vote on Black Umbrella for no other reason than that I believe that we do not need a zone change in Garden Grove. Now, something that nobody has mentioned is the fact that downtown Historic Main Street, for several years now, has lived under a black cloud of a threat of losing its one and only parking lot. And I know that the Downtown Business Association and the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association have both, in fact, you know, been petitioning, and we've fought against the building of 110 condos, which, looking at the Sheldon Project, would have, I think, totally destroyed Garden Grove Historic Main Street. So nobody mentioned that. In fact, I could go back 35 years that I've lived here, and some of the opportunities that we've missed in the past to revitalize downtown. My wife and I, we went recently to the Packing House in Anaheim. That's something that we should have had where the MOD building is, or was. We could have done a heck of a lot, but there's always been something negative about, I'm not necessarily talking about current council and staff, but in the past, there's been a lot of preventative actions to prevent growth and attracting business in Historic Downtown. Now that the Sheldon Project has been shelved, and we have hopefully preserved the West Parking Lot, it gives us the opportunity now, the Downtown Business Association and the Neighborhood Association, to start to do our own revitalization. And this is something that we need to be given the opportunity to do. We had a very successful family night out with the police department, et cetera. We are going to have our candidate's forum in the plaza between Motor Cross Cafe and the Globe. And we have other projects to, you know, festivities for that very plaza. So, you know, we really need the opportunity to be given, you know, to revitalize our way and to maintain the integrity of Historic Main Street. Now, having said that, a lot of people have brought up character tonight, that, you know, movie stars and sports stars and all that wear tattoos. And I've never argued about that. My son has tats, and some of my heroes have tattoos. The point is, I most certainly, and most of my colleagues who are opposing this CUP, agree that Curtis Gibson is a very nice person. He and his wife, family, people, church-going. So with nothing negative about his character or any of his colleagues that have spoken tonight. One of his colleagues that has tattoos up and down his arm did actually attend our annual general meeting this year. Very happy to see him. So I think we can take character off the table. It is just a matter of not needing to change the character or the zoning of Historic Main Street in Garden Grove. And I hope that you will give that a no vote tonight. Thank you for your time.
Rick Lerma.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, staff. I'm Rick Lerma. I'm a business owner at 12931 Main Street in Garden Grove. I'm here tonight to speak about the potential zone change on Main Street. I've been a resident and business owner since 1966. I remember all too well, for 20 years, when Garden Grove Boulevard was plagued with adult bookstores. One by one, they came, CUPs granted, or was zoning changed? I'm not sure. Regardless of how this happened, it took the city years to eliminate these places. And there's still a couple left on Garden Grove Boulevard. Zoning changes on our street open up the door for lots of potential problems. The issue about tattoos. My wife and I have four children that have tattoos. We've been listening to this thing three meetings. That this group, Downtown Business Association, is against people with tattoos. And that's just not so. I don't understand why it's so important for the applicant to be able to open up on that 100 yards or 100 feet on Main Street when there's dozens and dozens of other opportunities throughout the city, available office-based storefronts to open up that place, to open up their tattoo parlor. Zoning was put in place to protect Main Street. Please think long and hard about the consequences of changing the zoning that the city forefathers put in place to protect it. I'd like to mention the hard work of the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association and its many efforts in improving, at improving Main Street, including arranging better car shows and events. We are planning some large events with professional event manager, who you'll be hearing from tonight, and all our, and all our family-oriented events. As you've heard, the recent Volkswagen car show in June was a success. It brought over 3,000 people to Main Street, and the restaurants were full. Please support our hard efforts at increasing the number of family events on our beloved Main Street. Thank you.
Linda Zamora. I knew after that second break we'd get rid of hers. Lynn Shaw.
Good evening. I'm so spun around by all the information that I got tonight that my speech has kind of changed. But I would like to, if I may, address the people that are here on behalf of the Black Umbrella. May I do that?
You can say anything you want to. You don't put on a show. Just talk to us. We're the people you want to talk to.
I want to tell you that this is not between us and tattoos. I'm so converted that probably by the end of the month, I'll have a tattoo tattooed. Just pull it down so we can, yes. But it's about the way the council has done business with us in the past, or not done business. And what I'm here to do tonight is to say, "We object to the change in the zoning because we haven't seen anything about the grand plan." I don't go on Facebook. I don't have any adolescents to help me. So I really don't have a way to find out what's going on and what the plan is. And now, somebody wants to make a variance to allow some business to come in before we know what the grand plan is. So it's not the business that we oppose. It's the shortcut that's being taken. I want to read a letter that was written to the mayor so that anybody who didn't get a chance to hear from Maureen will know what she said. "I am unable to attend this very important meeting tonight due to family travel plans, so I must voice my oral communications in writing. I respectfully request you vote no on amending the zone for the Civic Center Main Street area. As a 35-year resident and property owner in Garden Grove, I reject the notion that creating, quote, 'newly-defined uses,' quote, close for businesses that are not zoned in an area simply to skirt around the code. Main Street is not zoned for tattooing. It should be no different if they sell other items in their shop. The fact remains the same. The applicant is requesting a code change to allow a tattoo parlor in an area that is not zoned for this type of business. Setting a precedence for variances, zone changes, and CUPs in an area that is having a great deal of time, effort, and money putting into Reimagine is going to be hard to come back from the ledge of, if approved. I could go into many other reasons to reject the application request, but I believe the fact that Main Street is not zoned for tattoo business is a sufficient rationale to vote no on this request." And I agree with that at this time, because there's not a plan yet. And there's not a cohesion and the support from myself or many of the neighbors that I talked to, because we don't know what we're supporting or what the city's doing. So I'm not opposed to the Black Umbrella. It sounds fascinating, and it'll probably, if the plan is a good plan, and the builders and the commission and the planning department all agree, and we've been communicated with and consulted and at least had our opinions respected, then I will go with what the majority chooses. But some of the logic I heard this evening was what I thought kind of faulty logic, using examples of other cities and other states that had tattoo parlors in historic areas. Each city and each state has a right to make its own plan and to share in a vision. We haven't had that opportunity yet, and I hope we get it. Thank you.
Rebecca Mills.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Mills. I'm also speaking on behalf of Mindy Mills and Erin Mills. Last time I did this, I shook so hard, I just read what was in front of me.
You know, we haven't lost anybody at that...
Haven't lost anybody yet.
Not for a long time.
I may be your first. I don't know. The first thing I want to say is, I went to grade school in Garden Grove. I went to junior high in Garden Grove. I went to Bolsa Grande. We bought our first house on Nelson, and we walked to Main Street all the time. I took my children to Joy Bell's bookstore. I love Garden Grove. I go to church in Garden Grove. I got married in Garden Grove. My mother's funeral was in Garden Grove. To say the least, I love Garden Grove. And I listened to the people that are posing and the ones that are for this tattoo parlor. And I'll tell you, if you know all the people here that know me, this is the last place they think I would stand. Because I had a rule at home. My sons were not allowed to have a tattoo till they leave the house. But I'll tell you something else. I've learned after 61 years that fear is a really, really, really bad thing to have. There's so many things that we fear. We fear the unknown. We fear what's going to happen if the zoning is changed. We fear what happens if a bunch of tattooed people come into Garden Grove. And we make so many decisions in our lives based on fear. Well, I had a fear of tattoos. And I'll tell you, it's going to sound silly, but I have totally changed my ideas. Because what it is, is art being shown by these people for what they believe in, and wonderful memories. Just sometime, take and talk to one of them and look at their tattoos and see the beautiful art that says, "This is my child's name and his birthdate. This is a footprint of the child that I lost." I mean, Curtis has done the most beautiful artwork. That I've totally changed my ideas about that. Now, when we talk about Garden Grove, I'd love to have Joy Bell's bookstore back there. Is it historic? Hmm, I don't know. But when I was here for the planning commission, two things really, really impressed me. One, that there were 75 people here at a meeting, and most of them young people. They are watching you because this is where they're going to sit someday, and decisions you make. They're going to watch because they're going to be sitting there someday. And I am so impressed that they came prepared. They've been very quiet, loving, respectful. And that is one thing that is a winner for all of you, is how they have acted. Then I've spoken to some of the people that have businesses on Main Street. And I think a lot of what they're worried about is having a zone change because of fear that other businesses may come. They're basing their decisions on fear. You know, I learned a long time ago that I can pray. I can ask the Lord to just help me with things that I'm really afraid of, because fear doesn't come from Him. And I won't let fear rule my life anymore. And I don't think you need to fear what's going to happen. These kids are pretty intelligent. They're very passionate. And they want to see and want to imagine downtown Main Street to be beautiful. And some of the things that they can come up with, pottery places, coffee places, bistros, all these interesting things that there might not have been a zone in 1800 for this kind of a business. So does that mean we don't change them now? There's going to be businesses in the future that it's probably not zoned for, that would be very beneficial. But are we going to fear changing that now because of something that's going to come up in the future? Don't make your decisions on fear. Make it based on, is it going to help Garden Grove? And I really believe with all my heart that that's our future out there. And we've got an amazing amount of young people that really love Garden Grove. And I hope that they stay here, and I hope that there are more Curtis Gibsons that want to open their businesses, and that we, from our generation, really encourage them to do that. Thank you.
Josh McIntosh.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So tonight we've had an overwhelming number of people here to speak in favor of the Black Umbrella Studio. I'm one of them. Sadly, this has been a polarizing issue that has tested the relationships of many people who do business on the street, that frequent Main Street, and many residents that happen to have body art or tattoos. We have one side that feels that the addition of the Black Umbrella Studio will compromise the character of historic Main Street. They feel that by changing the zoning here that we're opening the gates to all kinds of seedy characters and businesses. They've said that we need to wait until the reimagine downtown survey has been completed before making any changes. On the other side, we have a Garden Grove resident who wishes to fulfill his dream of opening a shop, doing what he loves to do for a living in the heart of his hometown. He chose Main Street for a reason. His name is Curtis Gibson. He's not a gang banger. He's not an outlaw biker. He's not a threat to society. He's an artist, a father, and an upstanding member of our community. Our city's motto is youth and ambition. I believe that Mr. Gibson is reflective of that. I've not known him for very long nor do I know him very well, but I do know that he has ambitions. His goal of opening up a traditional art studio combined with a body art studio on Main Street is something new to us. We have several tattoo shops across the city, but not on Main Street, yet. As a board member for the Orange County Historical Society, a docent for the Garden Grove Historical Society, I will say that the Black Umbrella Studio is not going to ruin the character of Main Street. That has been going on for a long time. With every major renovation done, when our historic buildings were modernized to create those mostly vacant buildings near Acacia, we lost the rights to call this a true historic zone. I'm speaking about the ones of the teal-colored Miami Vice-looking awnings that are all ripped up and look like crap. As long as the Black Umbrella Studio does not alter the-
Mr. McIntosh.
Do do.
Now, you know I don't allow bad language up there. Now, let's not hear any more out of you, okay?
As long as the Black Umbrella Studio does not alter their storefront, they're not compromising what's left of historic Main Street. So if people are not willing to say that they're prejudiced about body art, then let's consider what businesses have operated on Main Street. We've had a massage parlor fronting for a prostitution ring not too long ago. The historical Gem Theater used to show porn movies when I was a kid. We had a marijuana pipe and accessory shop not that long ago. We currently have several businesses that sell tobacco and alcohol. Are we saying that cancer-causing cigarettes and intoxicating alcohol are okay, but decorating one's body is not? We even have many, we have what many people will say are the lowest of the low operating on the street, attorney's offices.[781.73][781.73][laughter] Let's talk about the character of Main Street. The first thing you see when you pull off from Garden Grove Boulevard is a big neon sign that reads Immigration Attorney. Then there's a row of vacant or closed shops. Okay, I made an error. One of those shops is in business, but it doesn't allow any customers inside or draw any foot traffic. That's the Costco purchasing office and sadly, they want to grow another store that does nothing to promote Main Street. It's a complete waste of a ground-level front storefront. The street has been declining for years since the antique and thrift shops were driven out. There's almost nowhere to shop on Main Street anymore. Compare that to any other downtown and you can see our problem. Our restaurants and theaters are bringing in activity in the evenings as best they can. Unfortunately, the flow of foot traffic is sporadic and sometimes nonexistent. We need businesses that attract people and bring them back. A tattoo studio normally does that. People say that they're addictive and usually wanting tattoos, not enough. A professional artist will charge $100 or more for an hour's work. This is a lucrative business and one that should outlast the past five to 10 businesses that I've seen open and close on Main Street. Our demographics have changed and this is not Mayberry anymore. Walmart, Costco, and the Home Depot have caused most of our mom-and-pop shops to close down. Sadly, our longest-running business in the city's Lackett's Market has given up on Main Street and is throwing in the towel. If Main Street is going to survive, we need to get some businesses that our residents and out-of-towners will come to. I'm not saying that one tattoo shop is going to save the street, but I think it's a start. Mr. Gibson has followed every protocol to opening his shop. He's reached out to every business owner and landlord that is willing to listen to him. He has the support of over half the street, including our longest-running businesses.
Mr. McIntosh, you've been our longest-running speaker.
And I'll close with, I believe the Black Umbrella Studio will be one of the best and first, the first and best examples to reimagining downtown and I hope this council
Stuart Bag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, and citizens. My name is Stuart Bag. By profession, I am the Director of Sales and Marketing for a $65 million packaging and display company. We're employee-owned. I am also one of three fiduciary trustees for my employee-owned company and one of my functions is to look after 47 employee owners' retirement benefits. I say that because now I am also, along with my wife, an investor in Black Umbrella Art When I bought a home in 1999, about a four-minute walk, leisurely walk, to Main Street, Historic Main Street. And when I bought it, there was 100% occupancy on Main Street. I, I loved that. I loved walking downtown to have breakfast at Case Kitchen, enjoy sandwiches at Lackett's. Now by my count, there's six empty storefronts. Am I correct there? I think I'm correct there. Including one of Leo's Lackett's buildings right next door to his deli. I was very saddened today to find out from Leo that he will be retiring soon. There's not enough foot track, traffic on Main Street to allow him to turn the business over to his son. Broke my heart. a group of passionate people here who love historic Main Street, who live close enough to walk to it, that want to walk to it to open up their shop every day. They, they want to, they want their kids to walk to visit their dad at his shop every day. That's why historic Main Street is so, the question was asked, why Main Street? Those are the reasons. He could have quit a long time ago and make very, been up and operating now somewhere else, but he's passionate about this area. And, and I'm so proud of them for doing that. I'm so proud of them for sticking by. An argument against the studio has been brought up that it opens up the door for other businesses. I'm going to put my faith in this council, our elected council, that they won't allow that to happen. They're going to look at each and every business as its own entity and determine the viability of that business to historic Main Street. And I don't think you're going to make the same mistake twice about allowing a massage parlor to come in. I don't think you're going to make the same mistake about the, whatever al-seedy businesses, massage parlor, massage studios are not adult bookstores. I think that's been proven and admitted by the opposition to this group over and over You, you have a family who's passionate about opening the doors. You have my wife and I that will remain mentors as they grow their business, allowing other businesses around them to grow as foot traffic grows. I, I love, I love that. I love what I see out here with these young people, just thinking globally but acting locally. And somebody mentioned that they'll be up here someday. I'm, 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 I'm very confident in that. And I'm very confident in the future of this community with the thought that some of these young people will be sitting next to some of you, making these decisions for their community. And, and if I'm thankful for anything in this process is that this process has allowed them to experience that. And, and I hope that this group allows them to experience their business in their dream on historic Main Street. And thank you very much.[1197.08][1197.08][applause]
Sheryl Cre.
She is gone. But she supports it, and her daughter. And my dad.
Have you spoken twice?[1218.71][1218.71][laughter] You know, the last person that did that, I got arrested.[1222.33][1222.33][laughter]
Arrest me.
She went to Rancho, Mayor. We're rebellious like that.[1234.58][1234.58][laughter]
Rancho, Rancho in Stanton?
It's not.
Vernor Chumley.
My name is Vernor Chumley. I'm a resident of Garden Grove, have been for about 40 years. And I find listening to these people tonight, they're very passionate, they're very articulate. Seems like they brought the whole church to support them. And my hat's off to this guy Curtis. I think that he must have good character for all these people to stand up to him. I think of Main Street as representative of a city. I think all Main Streets across the country, across the nation, represent the city that they're in. And I think in changing the zoning, you are allowing, you are opening the doors to adult-themed businesses. I think the tattoo parlor is an adult-themed business and I don't think it should be in the little block of Main Street that is, that is our representative of our city. I, I think that, I don't have nothing against tattoos. I wish them well. I just don't think that they should do it in the block of Main Street.[1311.13][1311.13][applause]
Scott Weimer.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak, but if I could please allow our events coordinator, who absolutely has to leave first to have an opportunity to speak, he's on the list.
Do you have any money?[1332.01][1332.01][laughter]
I have to say, I love the passion in this room. It absolutely, really gets to my soul and my heart. I've been a resident of Orange County for 48 years, 22 of Garden Grove. I have two children and the focus of my life has been art and events and event planning. I have a passion for history as well. This was, my degree was in history. And I see a huge amount of history on Main Street. I see an incredible amount of passion in these artists and I see some business owners with the Garden Grove Business Associate, I'm sorry, with the Main Street Business Association that really want to drive Main Street forward in a very progressive way budget. I went to the city in December of this year, or of last year, and proposed to the, to several people there, an idea that I had for renovating Main Street and driving business there by bringing events, by bringing a, a child safety zone, by bringing a family gaming zone, by bringing up interactive family shows and trades and arts to the street to drive business to the street. They referred me to the Business Association and in February presented a plan to them that outlined a series of some 20 events for the year that are large, major events, and then weekly events that would accent their car show with local schools. Local school involvement, local association involvement, various nonprofit groups and so forth, running booths and so forth, to really activate and push the community, the roots of our community through their associations, through their sports groups, gosh, including Boy Scouts, including the Boys and Girls Clubs, and having them actively actually market and partake in a driving, in driving business to Main Street through these large production shows. To give you an idea of the things that we have been planning over the last eight months, I'm sorry, for the last seven months, those shows would include things that address cultural issues or that would attract or be, or accent the multiculturalism of Garden Grove, including a spring equinox show, including a Cinco de Mayo show, specifically arts and sports show. And let me say, just thought myself there, to really give myself a little bit more authority as far as the arts go and what my real passion is and how deep my passion goes for art. I gave up four years of my life. I felt in 2008, with my own two children, and I felt incredibly frustrated that we were losing our arts and sports in our schools. I have taught music for 30 years, myself on the side, for free to children and to the public. I reached out to other artists that I knew and locked in an association of over 60 art studios and sports studios to give free arts and sports to kids. In 2008, I opened a, the Cornerstone Academy of the Arts and offered that to children in Garden Grove and we sense of service over 5,000 students per year for free in over 174 different arts and sports. It's an incredible program, but unfortunately, I could not afford anymore and had to close down in 2012. It was philanthropic. We did not take a dime for what we did. My point in saying that is I deeply, truly love any type of art, so I understand where they're coming from. My frustration with this is, why Main Street? I've been a resident here my entire life. There are places in Garden Grove, there's places in Anaheim, there are places in Orange that each have got places specifically zoned for this. You can go around the corner and see it. I don't see that addressed here. I love the passion. I love the art. I do not see the reason. I will tell you, I have produced, I have marketed, I am marketing well over 100 events right now in Southern California. I'm a specialist for Hilton Hotels. And I will tell you, there is no question that with the vision that we have put forth to try and drive business onto Main Street, that if you put a tattoo parlor on that street, it will hurt that vision and that movement for those, for those festivals. There's no question about it. There is no question of the business, of the, of the negative impact on the business with that. Now, were it to move in on its own right now without this vision? Any business is going to bring in new revenue, whether it be a tattoo parlor, whether it be a clothing store, whether it be a hardware store. Of course, the argument that it will bring business to Main Street and increase revenue is true. It is a trend that is moving across the country and I understand. I'm sorry, my time is up. I'm so sorry. I have so much more to say. I want to tell, just want to close very quickly in saying, I do truly love what all of these people say with the passion within their hearts and in their souls that they're trying to get across, but you have to understand that the individuals here that are against it, they are the business owners that are there that have the vested interest there. They have their heart and their soul.
Okay, so you've gone too far.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.[1678.53][1678.53][applause]
Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Council and staff, thank you very much for providing him the opportunity to speak. He was supposed to leave over an hour ago. Was sitting very patiently and diligently back there. My name, as many of you know, is Scott Weimer. I reside, I own the building at 12866 Main Street in historic Garden Grove and I'm here tonight to say that I'm not in favor of any action that would change the existing zoning on Main Street. As many of you know, my wife Rebecca and I have lived in this town since we were children back in the 1960s and we've seen a lot of changes. Unfortunately, many of them in Garden Grove and many of the commercial districts have not been for the best. When, when her and I made the decision whether or not to stay in Garden Grove many years ago, and at a time when our city was not so affectionately referred to as Garbage Grove and so many of our good friends and family members were abandoning it in our city, we made a conscious decision to remain, but decided that the only place in our city that we would want to invest in, as well as run our business out of, would be the historic Main Street District. That was 18 years ago and we're still very glad that we did. Main Street is a very special, unique, and distinct place in here, here in Garden Grove. And to better describe it, I'll read it right out of the city's municipal code. It states that those properties within the Main Street Retail Overlay Zone, as shown on the map attached and to the ordinance codified, in this section will be designated as a place of special character and aesthetic interest and value. Special regulations and conditions will be enacted for the protection enhancement and use of this particular area. And the permitted uses, it goes on for five pages. There, there- permitted uses, it goes on for five pages. There's a lot of permitted uses that are allowed on historic Main Street. There are also a lot of uses, of which are not permitted, on historic Main Street. Most of them, you can probably figure out why. I've been a licensed Realtor and a real estate broker in the city for thirty-five years, and I can tell you unequivocally, that a proper, positive, and productive tenant mix is a very fine and delicate process, and balancing act, and it is absolutely imperative to the success of any business district. It is not simply a matter of placing any tenant in any property when you have a single vacancy in any particular building. It's a matter of choosing the right tenant for the right area, given the surrounding tenancy mix. Every tenant should be chosen on its own individual merits, relative to the requirements of the prospective customer, client, or visitor whom you want to attract, their spending and behavioral patterns, and the potential changes that may result to the business district as a result of their tenancy. If you neglect the tenant mix, and disregard the protective zoning provisions, the rental and vacancy factors in any commercial district will most likely change for the worst. And I think most of us have seen this in many areas in Garden Grove. I'm not saying that we're immune to it, but this does happen. Research has proven time and time again, that the right tenant mix is one of the most crucial factors in the success of any shopping district, and that it requires special skills when it comes to tenancy analysis and tenant mix strategies. And that it is through the zoning process, that formulating the right tenant mix for any particular business district, it is the zoning process, that is the police mechanism for this process. It's my presumption that the city planners knew exactly what they were doing, and accomplished this, back when they originally established Main Street's zoning ordinance, and its list of allowable occupancies. When the redevelopment agency spent millions of dollars performing all of the structural, architectural, and aesthetic improvements to Main Street back in the nineteen-seventies, it was undoubtedly staff's intent to protect the city's investment, by creating a preferable, logical, well-thought-out, and protective mix of tenants, of which I feel they achieved. I would further wager to say that because of these restrictive and protective zoning codes, and the very special place that Main Street is today, still is today, because of these codes, is the reason that the vast majority of business and property owners, including myself, came to the street in the first place, and continued to invest our time, effort, energy, and financial resources into the maintenance and preservation of our beloved downtown. I will therefore leave you with a question. Do we really want Main Street to look like what so many other areas of our city have unfortunately evolved, or should I say, devolved into, due to lax or overly liberal zoning ordinances, and/or the city's inability to enforce them? If not, then please, please, I ask you to please cast your vote tonight, in allegiance and concurrence with the Main Street Commission's determinations and decision to uphold the existing code, the Downtown Business Association's unanimous resolution to uphold the existing code, and most importantly, staff's original official recommendations to uphold the existing code, and to deny this one party's request to amend, change, and otherwise make less strict and more lax the current zoning and tenant mix standards that were established for the protection and preservation of historic Main Street so many years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Collins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. I have to commend the articulation that I'm hearing this evening, about an issue that is passionate to us all. I'm Dan Collins. I have had a business in Garden Grove since nineteen-seventy-four, and the age issue is something that hits me in a little bit of an interesting way, since my particular business deals with children between the ages of three and seventeen, and we have seen well over ten thousand Garden Grove children. Through our establishment, we have had a passion for keeping up with what goes on. I would hardly be able to be in business today if I were not current with what was happening with the youth of today, and nurturing not only their artistic sense, but their moral sense and their substance. With that, I think we are stepping into an area that might be hazardous, and that is the fact that any time we surround ourselves of like people, and listen only to like ideas, we can start to believe that everyone steps into that same situation. Not wanting to fall prey to that, I did a little research on my own, and quickly sent out just a statement that stated, we the, to the Garden Grove City Council, "We the undersigned believe that changing the Garden Grove Main Street code to allow a tattoo parlor, and therefore the possibility of other adult-oriented businesses, would not be in the best interest of the street, our city, or its residents. We are encouraging you to vote no for this change, and maintain the code that is currently in place." I did not campaign these particular signatures at all. I wanted to step out of my comfort zone, and see what the people around me really felt. I didn't, if I surrounded myself with dancers and singers and musicians, I would hear what I wanted to hear, which we have heard all night, with these very passionate, very articulate people in reference to this code change. So I stepped outside of this, and I will present this to you. I have copies also, if you'd like to turn them out. There's the original. And this represents a wide range of Garden Grove residents that are keeping track of this, and the people that are voting people, they are all over eighteen, and they are not in concurrence with changing a code that has a huge question mark. I would never have come to this issue if I had not had people come to me by the mere presence of a sign in a window, and that's why it came to me. I've invested in Main Street, well over two hundred thousand dollars in my building, to make it safe, and to make it appropriate for the type of activity that we have with our children. I represent a wide range of young people that have children from the ages of twenty-five through forty, as our average, all dealing with children from three to seventeen. Many of them have tattoos. I personally have no objection whatsoever, nor an objection to the gentleman that wants to experience his entrepreneurship with his dream. But I know that the perception of bringing people into my business is impacted by the mere sign in a window, let alone the actual execution of this particular kind of business. It will impact me tremendously. It has already impacted me tremendously. These are facts, this is not fantasy. My particular company has given back to the community gladly, to the Boys and Girls Club, to the Strawberry Festival, the Miss Garden Grove Pageant, to Hope Center, to a multitude of churches that we do festivals for, with a passionate zeal for keeping our young people outgiving back to the community with their talents. I would implore you, that you listen to these people who were not campaigned to sign this at all, who signed it freely because they had a passion about what was going on, and vote no to this code change. It's not voting no to Curtis and his wife, it's not voting no to his passion, or to the very articulate and intelligent young people, that I'm thrilled to see involved in this process. But I do ask you to please, think about the ramifications, not only for an established business of forty years, but to the ensuing problems that may occur. Thank you so much.
John Scott.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed Council members, staff. My name is John Scott. I have operated in an accounting, tax practice in Garden Grove for thirty-five years. I guess I'm still a youngster compared to Dan, he's got forty. He's my next-door neighbor, we share a common wall. For the last eight and a half years, my office has been on Main Street. I'm located directly across from the front door of the proposed tattoo parlor. I'm a number cruncher, bean counter, whatever slang you want to use for the type of work that I do, and I want to talk about some numbers tonight, because that's what I do, and I think that brings everything into clear focus. I believe what's been submitted to you by the Planning Commission is incorrect. It does not give true numbers. It doesn't add one and one and get two. Let's start with the diagram right behind you. They, I'm reading from one of the Planning Commission meetings, it says, "The art gallery in the front of the space, twelve-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet, and behind that, allowing a tattoo studio in eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight square feet." They've said that the tattoo studio will not exceed thirty percent of his occupancy. Now, the only thing I can figure is, he took the common area, which is shared by another tenant, maybe took the sidewalk, maybe took the parking lot. But if you take these numbers, and you do the simple division, he's going to occupy forty-two percent, not thirty percent, which right away flies against the CUP. You know, as I talk here to you, and as I've listened to everybody, and I recognize their passion, I keep thinking, do no harm. And we've talked about the tattoo studio, but we're not talking about the harm that it can do elsewhere. And for that, I'm glad you just listened to Dan Collins, who for forty years, has brought kids into his tattoo parlor. I'm right next door, I see kids walking by my front windows every day, going into his place of business, to, not to the tattoo parlor, obviously, to the colony. I'm not a public speaker, you can tell. Hundreds of them, every week. And it's also been mentioned tonight, by a speaker, how much he was hurt when arts were taken out of the school system. Drama, music, all of it. It's not offered. Dan offers it. When he talks about putting the money into his place, it's not his place, he rents his place. He's put that in on its own, and now belongs to his landlord. You know, now he has parents that are already refusing to bring children to his place of business. The Falls here, and they're saying, you know, we don't think it's a good venue for them, and so, this is going to hurt his business. Maybe put him out of business. He has six thousand square feet, he has the children. We've talked about young people tonight, but you know, tattoo parlor, nobody under eighteen is allowed. We're not talking about the three-to-seventeen-year-olds, we're talking about the children. We're talking about driving the children off of Main Street. I got two more numbers to present to you. One's five hundred, one's eighty-six. I'm reading from the staff report again. It says, "An art gallery business with tattoo art studios shall not be located within five hundred feet of a school." Let's see. Dan has teachers, he has classes, he has credential teachers, he, he has a contract with the school district. He's providing these things. He's eighty-six feet from door to door. I think that's under five hundred feet. Do no harm. Don't vote to chase the children
Mr. Scott.
Off of Main Street. Thank you.
Okay. Adrian Holm.
I submitted my letter, and then to save time, I will not get up and speak.
Thank you, Adrian. John Holm.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the City Council and staff. My name is John Holm. I've been a thirty-five-year resident of Garden Grove, and I have, regarding the zoning change, there are two issues, or three issues of concern. Number one, trust. Number two, metrics, not matrix, metrics. And number three, consequences. In the matter of trust, my wife and I visited the city of Huntington Beach, where the applicant had other previous business. We discovered that the applicant's permit was for an art studio. The city of Huntington Beach did not grant the applicant a zoning change, but the applicant did have a tattoo parlor for almost a year. Trust is a value earned in the light of day, not in the dark of night. To some, trust is trivial; to others, it's a foundation for a successful business. Metrics, the measure of success in business. Recently, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association had a backyard brunch, with citizens invited. The applicant and their friends were invited, and they were polite and cordial people. In response to our effort to include all citizens of Garden Grove, it was pointed out that the older generations, see the gray hair, older generations, should step aside and let the younger ones take over. I don't agree with that. The Downtown Business Association is working hard to improve events. Thanks to the help of Volkswagen, our recent theme show was Success to the Merchants. Jim didn't point out the fact that we made money. And the whole discussion tonight is, we need new business in Garden Grove. No, we need money, and we don't need tax money. We need money that we generate. And the theme shows are, the Volkswagen show, we're going to have Cadillac shows, we're going to have Corvette shows, we're going to have motorcycle shows. These shows bring in people that have something that we want, and it's called money in the pockets. They spend money. If we spend money on downtown merchants, watch everything come up. I talked to Jim tonight, and he said, already, we're being asked to put on other events. So, we don't need the tax dollars from the city. All we need is a chance to work properly. Consequences. Garden Grove, once upon a time, faced a serious problem with adult bookstores, and the happy hookers on Harbor. It took over thirty years to turn things around, thanks to the effort of the Garden Grove Police Department. A zoning change on Main Street stands the chance of reopening a floodgate of zoning change requests, and therein lies our real, true issue. It's not these good people that we've talked to, they're decent people, family people. Our concern is, we don't want the city to be having, to face these issues of zoning change requests for adult-type businesses. Downtown historic Main Street has one objective, and that's to make money for the merchants. Yes, we have vacancies, yes, it's kind of in the malaise, but if we bring money into downtown, and not tax dollars, we will find it will be very successful for all of us concerned. Thank you.
Chris Stoltz. Peter Katz.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor and staff. As former Main Street Commissioner, and Chairman of the Main Street Commission, a business owner on Main Street, and a resident of this county for nearly fifty years, I speak in opposition to the black umbrella. But it's late at night, I want to liven this place up a little bit. But while I was speaking to the Planning Commission, this is a picture of your Planning Commissioner, sound asleep when this issue was being addressed. So it brings me to the topic of what I want to talk about tonight, is the slippery slope of changing a zone. We don't change the US Constitution for reason, every time we disagree with it, or every time we want to try something new. The Constitution is amended very difficultly for a reason. Businesses change, things change, but there's a sound foundation for it. Zoning is very, very important, and when you start changing zones, you create a slippery slope, and every city has had to realize this over and over again, it's a slippery slope down into sleaze. You saw it in the city of Stanton, when they tried to put in an entertainment theater, and the Mitchell Brothers opened a XXX Theater, and it took thirty years to shut them down. It went to the US Supreme Court. So you give the opportunity here. The fire station motel, we're The fire station motel, we're renting rooms by the hours to hookers. How long did it take to shut that down? When you deal with family, community events, look at the cities that have changed their downtown, where they've had problems. Fullerton, too many liquor licenses created riots. Huntington Beach, 2nd of July, surf festival, houses were burned. There was no control over this. It got out of hand, and this is what's happened, this is why zones are in place. Marijuana shops. You can go over and over again. Casinos. How many cities have tried casinos? That's illegal business. The morality of it. Las Vegas is known as Sin City. They had to change to create family value, mixing age, the elderly, the young, the family, in order to make a successful business and a community work. You just can't have one generation create a business. These are fads. Tattooing is a fad. Yogurt shops, tanning salons, soda fountains, drive-in theaters, they just come and they go. And you know, one of the top tattoo artists, Kat Von D, Catherine von Dreschenberg, has a tattoo parlor on Hollywood Boulevard, in the heart of the tourist business. And she tells the history of the tattoo artist. It was created by Mexican gangs in the California State Prison System using guitar strings and melting checkerboards to create the ink that created the line drawings for tattoos that gave it its popularity and its beginning. So it's a fad. Mutilating the human body is nothing new. It's been going on for a long time. Look at the success of tattoo parlors here in Garden Grove. Go on Booker's. You got two of them. There's nothing but weeds growing around the buildings and the parking lot. I went by there today, there's not a single car in the parking lot. So the type of business and the amount of business that's being brought here, you know, you're pulling your leg. Let's look at what zoning changes do. Zoning changes are not what they're... When you amend a zone, you're going to find out you're going to get a lawsuit. Other adult businesses are going to come in here because you've changed the moral value of the street, and, you know, tattoos are okay, but so are other adult types of entertainment. So where do you want it to align here in the city? And where do you want the heart of Garden Grove to be? Do you want the true value of the city to be a moral one, or do you want it to be a business model? We have a business model on Harbor Boulevard. But what kind of model do you want for the heart of the city? What do you want the city to be known as? The city of Stanton, for example, belonged to Anaheim, and they wanted to create a garbage dump there. It was called Stink City. Then Mr. Stanton purchased that land just so that zone change did not go into effect. He bought the entire piece of land, created a new city from the city of Anaheim. So let's take a look at zones, I mean, and what zones do. I mean, a lot of cities have tried it. Atlantic City is failing. Casino after casino is closing. Popular. People spend money on it. It's legal. What's it do to families? How many broken homes from gambling? Lottery tickets? That was supposed to solve the school business.
Mr. Katz, will you please take a break?
Okay, let's go home.
Last but not least, Mr. Curtis Gibson.
I'm very nervous. I will start with the street. The Downtown Business Association has said they have all these plans for the street, but I am here to say they do not speak for it. The Main Street Commission is made up of the members of the association, and I have on here 23, but one of them closed, the Zumba store. So 22 signatures from landowners and business owners on the street I'd like to submit. And with that being said that they do not speak for the street, we have, what's that, 13 neutral businesses that do not want to participate based on the fear of the repercussion. And I've only counted seven businesses that say no, and only three businesses we were not able to get a hold of during our campaigning of the street. And for our petition that we got, we actually watched walk the neighborhoods and did an online petition, but we walked door to door. There was no, "Hey, tattooed people, come sign this," when walking door to door for Garden Grove residents. This is being well-received by people that want to participate in the street, and a lot of them don't go to the street for any other reason. I want to invest in the street. And the Huntington Beach thing, I never applied for a zoning change. I never applied for a CUP. I opened my business naively, thinking an art studio would be okay because tattoo is art, and I found out otherwise and shut down. I think that's where I'm at. I don't think there's anything I should address. Do I answer questions now, or do I walk away?
No, you have a... When you get, when that light turns red, you have a seat.
The street is excited about this change. There's lots of businesses that want to see this, and unfortunately, a lot of them couldn't make it, but they want to be heard. They don't want to be shushed up anymore.
This is probably still going to go on for a while. You want to take a real quick break, or?
Yeah.
Let's do it, yeah.
Specifically dealing with the correlation between art studios/tattoo parlors and crime.
Okay. The other question I have is, as far as the concern with young children on the street that are going to the dance studio across the street, from an operational perspective, is it going to be visible or somehow going to damage the children's wholesomeness by having the shop across the street? I'm just trying to get a visual. If I was a young person, you know, a parent, taking my children to this dance studio, how would that studio or the art studio being there affect me personally? Would there be a direct line of sight into what Chris may be doing back there? Or how will it be set up to where we can prevent that type of possibility?
Well, you can see the elevation at the top of those photos there. I mean, it looks like a normal storefront with an attractive awning. The front portion of the business that's in the blue is an art gallery, and the storefronts and the displays have to be for the art gallery. When you go approximately 50 feet back, there is a partition wall that divides the art gallery from the tattoo studio. And that, working with the applicant, we raised that height to 48 inches, so smaller children cannot look in and see any of the tattoo studio work. And also, we're going to put a solid wall in the middle at some portion when we work out the plan check, that will be for the art itself, with the name of the artist. So when you come in, you will see art and the artist's name, and then on the sides will be open to the tattoo, in the back, 50 feet back into the shop.
So I presume children will be allowed in the front part of the shop, correct?
Yes.
And this may be a question for Curtis himself, but as far as when you're asked to tattoo sensitive areas, that is not just the common arm, legs tattoos. Are there any cautions or any in place to prevent children from seeing these more sensitive tattooing?
Yes, I believe it's part of the CUP to actually restrict- Can I? It is a condition of approval, that there's a screen, and you cannot have any of those areas out for public view.
I believe, one of the Speaker John had mentioned that there's a 500-feet rule prohibition against having this at a school. Why is the dance studio not considered a school?
It's considered a dance studio.
Okay. All right. And-
Like an art studio, or martial arts studio, or a dance studio. It's the classification of use.
So school in this effect is basically your standard, typical definition of a school, meaning kindergarten through 12th grade type?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Mr. Baird.
Yeah. I just want to say, having heard all the testimony tonight, it's very persuasive, both sides. Very eloquent, very informative, and I appreciate and concede the passion on both sides. I, well, with that passion, persuasion, I should say, I'm half convinced. And so, being half convinced, I think the real people that need to be convinced as well would be the downtown businesses there. We have some information saying it didn't reflect all the businesses, but I do respect the commission's vote on this. I understand the elements of zoning as an issue. I don't see a real ethical or moral issue related to tattooing whatsoever. I respect the people that came forward, who are proponents of the tattoo studio. I clearly understand it's a generational issue. That's how I see it. But with that, I've always given preference to the businesses. And any, I remember being on the planning commission, I was always looking towards the impact of those immediately at the project site. They are that entity closest to the proposed business, so I'm leaning, or would suggest that work needs to be done to convince the businesses on their, of the persuasiveness of allowing a tattoo art studio to go in there. Having said that, I have a question pretty much for the city attorney, and that's related to if a vote goes forward with a vote not to approve. My understanding is that if it's denied, then they can't come back? Any applicant cannot come back for about a year, year's period?
That's what the general rule is in the code, unless the city council determines that the denial is without prejudice.
That's my question. If a motion were to go forward to deny this without prejudice, then the applicant could come back within that year's time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so in that time, as a possibility would be for the applicant to go back to the association, work with them, to see if they can work out some agreement to be there on, be acceptable to them. So that would be my motion, would be to deny it without prejudice. That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Let's let the other people have a chance to talk before we do that for a second. Your turn.
Um, just want to have dialogue a little bit with staff regarding kind of the technical aspects of what's being applied for here. There's been a lot of talk about the zone change. When I think of a zone change, I typically think about something that would change the intensity of use allowed within a certain location, like going from a C1 to a C2 zoning, or going from, you know, light industrial to manufacturing industrial kind of zoning, or that sort of thing. Is that what's going on here? Or how would you, how would you define the nature of the change to the zoning request?
It's just adding an additional permitted use. If you look at the zone, you have, in zoning, you have permitted uses, you have conditionally permitted uses, and then all other uses are not allowed. So what this would do would be just to add one additionally, additional conditionally
Have we, have we seen other similar requests over the years of variances or zone changes or whatever on the street?
Aaron has a summary of the code changes for Main Street. We thought this might come up for the past 20 years. We have a list of the CUPs that have been approved and the zone changes.
So the code amendments on Main Street-
So, the code amendments on Main Street since 1987, there have been nine. They include adopting the new mixed-use zoning, amending the code to allow housing above existing commercial establishments. The zone was a little wider, it was considered the MX zone at that point, and so there was a change to allow a drive-through restaurant. There was an amendment in the coffeehouse regs to allow live entertainment at coffeehouses in the Main Street historic. In 95, there was an amendment to allow educational centers. So, we have had several times where we changed and added new uses. At a certain point in 1987, we changed from having all retail on the ground floor to allow office uses. We have changed uses. The CUPs, I stayed a little more current since 2008. There have been nine CUPs on Main Street, and they have all been around alcoholic beverage sales in restaurants, either adding original licenses, and liquor stores, either adding original licenses or increasing the type of license to general liquor, extending hours, and adding entertainment.
There was a concern expressed by a number of people about that this zone change could trigger a wave of other adult uses or other type things. I mean, what, there's always a planning concern about sort of setting a precedence that could open the door for other uses. So, what specifically could, what other adult uses could this particular change allow?
Well, all uses would, as one of the speakers mentioned, would have to be approved by the city council. So, it's amending the code, you know, which we say, the code is a living, breathing thing. And the code reflects the values of the community at the time. So, all the changes that Aaron has brought up reflected what the previous council valued at the time. So, right now, whatever choice you make, that reflects the values. If you, if somewhere down the road, there's some other type of use that the council wants to see happen, then they have to make the decision and get a majority to approve it. So, I couldn't really sit down and say to you, it would have to be someone would come in with a request for some type of a business, we'd have to consider it, and if it seemed appropriate for that time and place, then, you know, the council would accept that.
Can I dovetail into your time, Steve, real fast? If we were to expand the code now, can we pull it back later?
You, the code can be changed, and you can, as far as permitted uses, you can expand them, you can reduce them. If you reduce them, and a business is still in place, then the business becomes grandfathered. But no additional new uses could come in. So, sure, we do that, we expand, we, you know, like I said, it's a living, breathing thing, it's not a set-in-stone thing, but we make it purposely difficult to change the code. And by, when I say difficult, I mean you have to go through a planning commission process, you have to go through a city council process, all this public testimony. So, it's not an easy, simple thing to change a code. It requires a lot of thought, a lot of deliberation, because it is, it does reflect your values. So, I think you do want to spend a lot of time going through that and determining what's important. But again, we do change the code. I mean, we have changed the code many, many times.
Question for our police chief. Do you happen to know how many existing tattoo parlors we have in town?
I've heard mention of two on Brookhurst, and I think there's one on Garden Grove Boulevard by Cannery Magnolia and Garden Grove Boulevard.
Nine?
No, there's nine total.
Nine total.
Nine total.
Are you aware of any sort of police activity, or criminal activity, or whatever surrounding tattoo parlors that would be of concern in any of the locations?
No, it's not a business that's not on the police department's radar. Hasn't caused us problems that I'm aware of, and in fact, I heard Councilmember Fawn say that we had nine tattoo parlors, and that's the first I've heard that number, so it's not an issue for the police department.
And I think finally, a question for legal counsel, because in a previous discussion we had mentioned something about our administration of zoning code, and that it can't be arbitrary or capricious, so could you relate in English what that means?
Well, basically, any decision that is made by the city council in terms of a zoning code, the standard that, the legal standard that is applicable is whether the city council is acting in an arbitrary or capricious manner. But basically, what that means is the council acting without any rational basis. And if the council, if a court determined in some sense that the council were acting without any rational basis, it would determine that the action is arbitrary and capricious, and therefore could have a basis to overturn it. But that's, it's a difficult standard to meet. There's a lot of latitude that the city council has in addressing zoning issues. So, it's a fairly deferential standard to the actions taken by a city council with regard to a zoning change.
Therein lies kind of an underlying thing with all this, is I've been listening and trying to hear a good argument against this particular use, or why, what makes this use different or unacceptable within a Main Street, and I'm having a hard time finding that. I mean, quarterly, most of the people, even in opposition, had said that, oh, there's nothing wrong with this guy, or this applicant, or his character, or with people with tattoos, or whatever. But if this use goes in, we're gonna drive all the kids off of Main Street, or we're gonna do this or that, the other thing. And in my head, I kind of substituted, what if it wasn't this business, what if it was a frozen yogurt shop or some other fad? Would that drive people off of Main Street? So, I don't, I sort of fail to see how this particular use creates any major negative impact to the character of the street, or to criminal activity, or from a planning or zoning, or even reimagining standpoint. I don't think this is like the one and only answer to reimagining. It's a byproduct, it's a creative byproduct that came out of sort of that process, I guess. But I'm sure having a hard time seeing anything that is gonna destroy the city of great.
May I ask one more question, as far as the grandfather issue? If, for example, we do approve the request, and Curtis goes rogue on us, and he's doing everything that we are not allowing him to do with the CUP, what are our options?
Okay. So, the first thing you have is the CUP. That's why we make them conditionally permitted uses. So, you can, you know, we have, in the past, had businesses that have gone rogue on us, and we have issued administrative citations. So, the police department and code enforcement have used a citation process to get the attention of the business, to try to get them back in line. Or even to the point where we have had some pretty bad businesses, and they've had a lot of administrative citations, they've gone out of business. Because it becomes, it can be up to a $1,000 fine, and as the police department has hit them with multiple citations, it becomes very expensive and not profitable to do business anymore. So, that was something that the city council put into place about five years ago, a tool that they gave staff, and I think it's been pretty effective. But if that doesn't work, then the next thing that you have is to revoke the CUP. So, you can come back and say that because he has operated so poorly, the CUP for him is no longer valid. And you take that back, you take that away from him. So, you do have tools, if he goes rogue, to either address his attention and correct his behavior, or ultimately to take away his right to do business.
So, with the revocation of the CUP, then, does that then still grandfather him into the code change?
If you revoke the CUP, he no longer has the right to operate the tattoo business. It's gone. He could potentially still operate an art gallery, because that's not the conditionally permitted business, if he wants to just tear it all down and become an art gallery. But if it's a tattoo parlor, that's the problem, you can revoke the CUP, and he has to shut down his tattoo parlor.
Yes, please, ma'am.
Based on distance requirements and such, even if the CUP is revoked from this particular business, it would still allow then a tattoo parlor on Main Street. So, someone else...
Subject to a CUP.
Subject to a CUP, but someone else can come in and then operate a separate tattoo parlor. Right now, it doesn't look like with the distance that you could have more than one. But if this business was revoked, someone else can come in, in a different location, it doesn't have to be in that building, but anywhere on Main Street, would be able to operate a tattoo parlor.
And would a change in the code, or the revocation of the CUP involve a council decision by a majority vote as well?
Revocation would require a majority vote.
The council or the planning commission?
It would go back to the planning commission first. The decision of the planning commission could be appealed to the city council. So, the city council could wind up being the final decision maker if that...
If this were to be approved tonight, could we request that the CUP gets reviewed in six months, so that we kind of monitor it over six months and take a look and see if there's any compliance?
I believe that condition has been applied by the city in other CUP situations.
We've had that with entertainment operations in the past. The planning commission has applied that requirement multiple, perhaps even when you were on planning commission, when there was a use that they wanted to keep their eye on, they have had them come back sometimes, even to report on the progress of the tenant.
So, in a sense, we could give them a try, and then monitor them closely, and bring them back and check and see if things are working out smoothly or not within, say, a six-month period?
That's an option, yeah. We've certainly done that in the past.
Is there a limit to the amount of, I don't even know what you call it, what would you call a person that does tattooing?
Artist.
Now, y'all said it at once, and I didn't get that.
Artist.
Artist. So, is there any, is there any limit to how many artists can be in that one studio?
Well, the floor plan shows six stations for artists.
Six stations, so it could be six different artists in that one studio.
But that would probably be a question for the applicant.
Go ahead, were you any more questions?
I don't have questions.
You have no questions?
I'm gathering my thoughts, so they can go first.
Is, if I had, if I was an artist, and I opened up my studio, wouldn't it have to be in a C3 area?
A regular tattoo parlor, which is different than this, is a different use with different...
This is different than a regular tattoo parlor?
Tattoo general is a use, and this is now an art gallery with a tattoo art studio, so there are very sort of rigid controls over how big the tattoo can be.
Okay, let me back my question up then. What guarantee is there that the art studio stays there?
It is a special operating condition and development standard written into the code for this use, so if you get approval for this use, you must keep the art gallery in the front of the business?
And that would be true if a second business went in. You're approving a combination art gallery/tattoo studio. You are not approving a tattoo parlor. So, even if this business went out and someone else wanted to come in, they'd still have to comply with the requirement to have an art gallery and the tattoo. So, there is quite a bit of a distinction as to what is being proposed for this location. It's not just a tattoo parlor, it's an art gallery plus tattoo versus tattoo somewhere else in the city.
And just expand on...
What happens if the art gallery goes broke? What happens if the art gallery moves out and says, boy, we're not selling anything in Garden Grove?
I would say technically, they would not be able to allow, to operate the tattoo portion of the business.
Yeah, they're violating the condition.
Yeah, without the art gallery, they cannot do the tattoo portion.
Revoke the CUP.
Mr. Baird made a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I want to make a statement, but did, has Councilmember Fawn finish his statement, whether he's in support or not?
I can continue, Mayor, if I may. I had questions, but I wanted to address...
Well, I want to give everybody a turn, and she can take her turn.
Okay, I don't have a question, but...
Okay.
I didn't hear anybody use body art tonight, and I think, oh, Josh, you did? Okay, I might have missed it. But I think body art has been around for thousands of years, Europe, Asia, the Middle East, America, Egypt, right everywhere. And it's how people identify themselves. I don't think anything is wrong with having tattoos. And that's for this distinction. I wanted to make it clear that I don't believe that tattoo, there's anything wrong with it, or it's somehow connected to crimes. I don't see that correlation. Another point I wanted to make clear is downtown Garden Grove, according to our imagined downtown Garden Grove, is not limited to Main Street. It's a majority part of it is our civic center, the library, our meeting halls, our city hall, police department, and our fire department, and a few residential homes around Main Traditionally, every time there's an issue regarding Main Street, the council gives a lot of deference to the Main Street Commission, because they are the voice of the businesses there, and the owners there. And I know originally that you did get some support, but later on, those people didn't sign on for the support. And Main Street Commission did come tonight and make their statements regarding this issue, just like all the other issues that affects Main Street. And about a couple of months ago, they spoke up about a project, a building project, that would affect parking, and the council looked at that, and then looked at the overall situation, and did see that that would affect how they run the business. Only the people of Main Street would know how the business would be affected by it. And another effect on Main Street is what our residents think about Main Street. And basically, we got a lot of inputs about downtown Garden Grove, and the tattoo parlor is just one of them. We got other opinions also. So, looking at the overall circumstances, and we have made a decision to change the zoning in 2011, and it hasn't been that long ago. And also, from what staff has mentioned, that if we do approve this tonight, it's, to me, it's like spot zoning. So, if this business is in there, and then not make it, then another business coming in would have to have exactly the same criteria, a tattoo parlor with an art gallery. So, anyone coming in with just an art, just a tattoo parlor wouldn't make it, they would have to have an art gallery with it. And seeing the passion tonight, seeing, you know, the people who want to put the business there, I think they have a really, really serious and passion for it. And I want to applaud them, and everyone that supports them for being here today. But I'm not sure that there would be another person down the road that would have the same passion. So, we basically, in my opinion, we would be changing this zoning ordinance for your purpose and for your business only, because I don't, I can't foresee another business being exactly like yours. And given also that, I give a lot of deference to the Main Street Commissions as well. And given also that, I give a lot of deference to the Main Street Commissions as well. They've been there, they fought for, for Main Street. They fought for the gate. They fought to make it nicer, more beautiful, repaved the road. They fought for the parking lot. Everything about Main Street that is better today than a few years ago, the Main Street Commission has fought for it. And if today they're here saying that, okay, we don't agree that this would fit in, I give that some deference to, but that's not the only reason why I would deny the applicant, the application today. I think overall, I think it's spot zoning is catering to one type of business that may not continue in the future. Also, because we already did a zone change back in 2011, and that's a lot of studies, like the staff said. We had to go out there, get all their opinion, get their hearings, and everybody had a chance to come and pitch in what they wanted to say about the zone change. And they had the opportunity about three years ago. And I'm going to stick with that. I think it's going well. It's a lot better today on Main Street than a few years ago.
Was that a second to his motion?
I will second Chris Beard's motion, yes.
Any further things? Any have anything else to say?
I just want to make a few comments. I'm actually on the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association membership role. I got asked to join by Scott when I first got to know Main Street, really loved it. Actually, I'm on the membership, haven't voted on the choices that was made on behalf of the association. Full disclosure, I'm good friends with many people who are in opposition to this request. In particular, Scott and Rebecca recently donated $200 to my campaign, so I really appreciate that. I mean, everything's in the open, that's what I love about what we're about to do here. I have many friends on the opposing side, and I respect everybody who's on this supporting side. You know, from the military background, I can truly say that I don't have one tattoo on me, but my life was saved many times by people with tattoos in the battlefield. One of our best DAs in Orange County, if you ever have to be a victim of a crime, and you need somebody to be on your side, this DA is basically the DA you want in your corner. He's tatted out. So I have to say, you know, with everything that's going on in this world now, people with tattoos, you just can't really judge a book by its cover. I go back to Curtis and who he is as a person, and his family, and the reason why they're asking for this. And, you know, it comes down to, do we change the code, or we don't change the code? But it comes down to the person who's requesting it. And based on, you know, his character and the fact that he's a family man, a churchgoer, you know, a great artist, that's very convincing to me. And I was concerned about the law, the legal aspect of it, law enforcement, as far as any issues increasing in crimes. The chief says no. If we were to say yes to this CUP, Curtis and his store would be under the spotlight 24/7. And I think that if he gets one step out of line, I think that he'll be, you know, definitely dinged for it. So with that, certainly, I'm, you know, I'm a huge supporter of Main Street. I want to see it flourish. And, you know, when we got together on the Fourth of July to put up the new flags there, it meant a lot to me, because Garden Grove, Main Street encompasses everybody. That flag symbolizes everybody. And that includes people who likes tattoos and who likes to have tattoos on their bodies. I don't have tattoos, but I'm in full support of those who do. So I think the vote tonight, you'll see, is one that is to be inclusive and to make sure that we involve everybody in the city and not just certain portions of the city. So we'll see what happens.
I'm not a big fan of Main Street. I believe it's got about 18 different owners, and they go in 18 different directions. I don't think anything's ever going to happen to Main Street until it comes to one owner or maybe two owners that can agree to do things together and make it happen. I definitely believe that spot zoning, as she put it, is really bad news, because of all kinds of problems with spot zoning. Mr. Wildsmith, he talked about integrity. What does integrity mean to zoning? And he used the word integrity. I wrote it down when he said it. So zoning is integrity because it has to have integrity, because it has to be what it is. I mean, it has to be, you have to have, follow a zone if you live in a certain area in the city. And to change that every time you turn around is a huge mistake. We had a situation in Westminster where they messed around with their zoning, and the next thing you know, they had an adult store where they, an adult bar there that, on Garden Grove Boulevard, in the Westminster part of Garden Grove Boulevard. They advertised that the girls working there had, only wore shoes. And we laugh and everything else, but we certainly don't want our children going into a place like that. We had a guy, a guy in Garden Grove that decided he was going to turn his adult bookstore into a juice bar. And he was selling them juice, a glass of juice, because the girls were totally naked. I'm just really afraid of adult issues. And I do believe that, I mean, I don't know how, I keep wanting to say, I don't know how a tattoo parlor ever got on a C3 zoning, but that's where it is. And that's where adult bookstores are too. So if you actually make a change, and you make the change in the zoning and everything else to put them on Main Street, and some guy buys into Main Street and wants to put an adult bookstore on there, he's not going to come and ask us to change for him. He's going to go into court and say, they changed for this guy. Let some judge make that decision. And believe it or not, we're in Orange County, but we have some wild-eyed liberals for judges in this county. And I can just see that happening. I do believe that zoning has to have the integrity that it has. And messing around with it and changing it is really a mistake, in my opinion. And take a look at Brookhurst Street, at the corner of Orange Wood and Brookhurst. There's a, the whole street is trees and grass and everything else, but there's one business right there. It's because this city council made a spot zone, and it changed it completely. I'm going to support, I mean, I don't want to support it. I mean, I had lunch with the applicant, his wife. I mean, they're great people, and they're nice people and everything else. But that doesn't mean that this can't fall into somebody else's hands. I don't believe, I think that, that art store up front is a joke. It's not going to, nobody's going to sell art in Garden Grove. You'd be dusting that off for the next 10 years. I'm going to support the motion. There's a motion and a second. I certainly hate to, hate to do this, but it's going to cost me a lot of votes in the next election. I'm sorry it is. But I am sincere about zoning. You just don't mess around with it, you don't change it all the time. And that would get you in nothing but trouble. Certainly got Anaheim in trouble. They've got these adult bars all over Anaheim. And it's all because they didn't keep up with their zoning. There's a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Okay, wait before we second. Let's make sure we know what we're doing here. A yes vote in support of him declines the issue. Am I correct? So if you vote yes, you two guys want to vote no. Now, I just want to straighten it out. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes, with Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Fawn voting no.
You got it the wrong way. The other way around, three up.
Yes, I said three yes. Three yes. That's how it was on here.
I know, I'm looking at the board.
You want us to do it again?
Okay, can you re-vote so I can, so we can check the voting?
You won't vote no.
Okay. Because that's what it said.
Shh.
A yes approves.
A no, a yes upholds the denial.
Yes supports the motion.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny. Well, okay. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Broadwater?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Fawn?
No.
Motion received, three yes votes, with Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Fawn voting no to, in proving the denial.
Oh, that's what's wrong. Oh.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go matters from Mayor, city council members. Mr. Barrett.
I want to wish the mayor happy birthday. I still want to wish you a happy birthday.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
That's it.
Yes, we have lots of difficult decisions to make, and we just have to go with our feelings about what's good for the city. I wanted to remind everyone that we still need to buy in Garden Grove. Those sales taxes are going up. That means more money for the people, and we need to support our businesses. I also wanted to say happy birthday to the mayor, and hope you get to make it up tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, happy birthday. Thank you, everyone. This is definitely, you know, an awesome experience. You know, it's all about democracy and what works and what doesn't. I respect the yes votes, and I respect the no votes, so thank you very much.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, I have nothing to add.
You know something, I missed, I did not catch the names that you wanted us to close in. Could you please give them to the Kathy? And we will close in their names. The next city council meeting be on September?
Ninth.
Ninth? September? You sure? Two and nine are seven, that's correct. Two and seven are nine. At this time, we are dismissed.